Your Kearney because he has a regional director will be a participant probably in the report on our fire services, so.
Kelly's online as well.
Oh, Director Vandenberg is online as well, so we will entertain a motion for freedom of the floor for our two regional directors. Counselor Baldwin, second to Counselor Dumas, discussion, all in favor? Motion is carried, so you will be able to ask questions and participate at the appropriate time. Thank you. So now I would ask for a motion that we adopt the minutes of the regular council, or sorry, the agenda of today's council meeting. Counselor Aries, second to Counselor Holland, all in favor? Motion is carried. Now we'll get to the minutes. The we will motion to adopt the minutes of the previous council meeting held on September 16th, 2025. Motion to Counselor Dumas, second to Counselor Hutton, all in favor? Motion is carried, and just a note there, there was a brief correction that that will take care of, so if anybody notices it, I'll give you a dollar.
Thank you.
Or more. So I guess we could now begin with the verbal and written reports of council. Now wondering if we can make that screen bigger, the glasses aren't strong enough for that? Thank you. So I'll begin again, on the 18th of September, I attended the regular RDCK board meeting. On the week of September 19th to 25th, the UBCM convention in Victoria. On, I think that's October 5th, second, or second Creston Valley Services Committee meeting, Christmas Happers meeting. On the 8th of October, and coffee talk with Mayor Council also on the 8th of October. Counselor Aries.
Yeah, and I on September 16th was at the Creston Valley Public Library meeting, and then on September 26th, the UBCM convention, those few days.
What's your doings?
September 26th is UBCM convention, September 30th with the Truth and Reconciliation walks one for Aries School, and then the other at Yakunuki. And October 1st was Water Services Committee, and October 6th is Blossom Festival Committee.
Counselor Iser.
October 8th, coffee talks with Mayor Council.
Hey, Counselor Baldwin, or no, sorry, Holland.
On September 26th, we go, went to the UBCM convention, and October 2nd had the Public Art Working Committee meeting.
Now, Counselor Baldwin.
There you go, joined the rest of the team at the UBCM convention for the week, and October. Oh yeah, October the 2nd, a regular board meeting with the Creston Valley Forest Corporation, and following that, the two-day session on strategic planning with the Creston Valley Forest Corporation again, with things came out of that, and also coffee talk on the 8th as well.
Also, Hutton.
September 22nd to the 26th at UBCM, and then on September 29th, I attended the Aries Assembly for the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, and we walked down to Creston Lake Park with the students.
Okay, and I just wanted to add, in my Christmas Happers meeting, I wrote a report on it, but the intention in our community is to, again, have Christmas Happers this year where it appeared that they weren't going to occur, but the work is being done behind the scenes by the Chamber of Commerce and the leaders society to try and continue with Happers. And it may be done a little differently, they haven't finished their plan, but it's something our community values, and they are very dedicated to trying to make this work, so I appreciate that, and I just wanted to say that before we got out of this part of our meeting, and so. Having said that, I would then ask for a motion that the verbal and written reports of council be received. Counselor Baldwin, second to Counselor Hutton, discussion, all in favor? That motion is carried. The RDCK board highlights are there, and I would then request that the RDC, the Regional District of Central Pootie Board Highlights from September 2025 be received. Counselor Dumas, second to Counselor Aries, all in favor? Motion is carried. We will continue with our meeting now, and with a motion that council resolves itself into committee of the whole for the next part. Counselor Dumas, second to Counselor Holland, all in favor? Motion is carried. And while I flip my page, here we're at, get on with what we have to do. I will start with the delegation from the Rotary Club regarding Centennial Park Ball Field project and requests from the town of Creston. Rotary, you were up, can you come up to the front here?
Thanks, Mr. President.
Casey Mensinger, Darren Stack, Nathan Henninger, and we're here to fill you in on our ball field project at Centennial. Rotary has a long history at the park. We built the splash park, pavilion, washrooms, the outdoor gym, picnic shelter, and the children's playground. And it doesn't seem that long ago that that was done, but I was one of those old guys up on the pavilion, cutting the metal and tacking it on that roof. Doesn't seem that long ago. Rotary is all about building and building community. And so our club approached minor baseball and the senior slow pitch, the users of the ball field about a year ago. And because we were looking for a project, and it seemed a natural, especially when we looked at the condition of the ball field. So we've been on this for about a year, and I will let Darren talk to you about the scope of the of the work involved in the project, we have some pictures up on there.
So the scope of the work for the ball field is, we would like to scrape the grounds right down, fill in all the potholes. Stall new sprinkler system, you saw it. Red shale rock on all the baselines on the infield there. We would also like to do some bleachers, fix some of the fencing, of course, redo the dugouts. And storage shed, and I believe the other thing on this was the netting on the back fence that's curved to keep the balls in the field properly. I think that's the scope of the work.
Big.
Yeah. Casey, anything else?
I can just try to keep it, save you time. Lot of benefits to the community if we can carry this project through. The field obviously needs serious work to it. This project would also provide a state-of-the-art sports hub in the community. Nathan can certainly tell you more about the need from the baseball perspective, but there are safety concerns, public accessibility concerns. So the whole process of carrying this through will eliminate some of the unsafe field conditions. And more importantly, it expands the seasonal use of the field and the daytime usage. Certainly if we carry through with the night lighting.
Yeah, I'm grabbing the night lighting.
Yeah. It would also provide a venue that would attract not just local but also regional ball teams to come to Creston who don't come now. So what do we need from the town? I briefly investigated funding for this project. We're probably going to need excess of $300,000. It seems like a large number, but the feedback I've been getting from possible donors has been positive. So that doesn't discourage us. But what's become clear is the need for a strategic plan from the, from the town concerning the long-term support that would be needed on the field. Donors who are interested in putting money forward want to make sure that, that when they invest that money, that the long-term security will be there. That requires a strategic plan from the town. It also requires a memorandum of agreement with, between the town and the users of the ball field. We need that for me to go out and ask for people to donate money. And of course, a letter of support from the town for the use of, for the project itself. And of course, financing, financial donations, but that said, that's in the future, I can't. The whole funding is based on a, on a budget. We don't have a complete budget right now because some of the costs aren't, haven't been clarified yet, and it will impact the, the overall budget for the project. It's, it's amazing how, how the numbers escalate when you start talking about this. But I have been to Gaslow, and I've been to Fruitvale, and I can see what communities are capable of doing when they, when they are committed to making a project work, and they have fabulous facilities there, so. If anybody has any questions that we could.
Please leave a comment. Go ahead, Counselor Holland.
Is there any additional equipment beyond what we already have that would be required to maintain the new and improved field?
Well, I can sort of answer that. Yes, there would be some upkeep, materials needed, let's say, in excess of a red shale. The, the current dragging and ranking systems would probably need an upgrade as well. Overall, in the scope of the cost, the maintenance tools won't be that much of one. I would say also that with, in these plans is, is the, is the inclusion of building a new storage shed for the maintenance equipment.
Right.
And therefore, it would be a lot more safe to store this new equipment.
Sounds good. Can I have one more? How often would you be replacing ideally the red shale?
Not, it wouldn't be a replacement, it would be.
Top up.
Yeah, a top up, you know, you would probably want to do that at least once a year.
Okay.
Do a full, like, full top up. You know, replacement, like an actual replacement, I mean, probably in the 15 years.
Right.
Counselor Baldwin?
It's a small thing, but have you talked to any of the neighbors about the lighting itself, and would there be any pushback on essentially extended hours?
No, I haven't personally talked to any of the neighbors about the lighting either than the ball field teams that keep on saying that it would.
They'd love it, I'd love to have them just.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
The only feedback that we've gotten from neighbors is balls being shit out of the ballpark, and this is why we're looking at this net, netting system.
Yeah.
Some of the, some of the neighbors that are along, they're going to treat it as, I think they, some of them are actually part of our minor baseball.
That helps.
So some of them will.
Was planning on putting them on some sort of a timer system so it shut off by certain kind of an ice layer rain all night.
Now, I have a couple of questions, the timing of this, because you don't want to be doing this during baseball season. Do you have a proposed schedule yet, or are you waiting for some more information? Well, for the work that you want to do in our community, that's great. This is probably the biggie of our meeting now, it's the Emergency Management Group Incorporated regarding the Creston Valley Fire Service Fire Master Plan, and if anybody looked at our agenda and wanted to read it, there's 277 pages there of reading just on this one topic, so. You are welcome to come up to the front.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys.
Again, I'm ready. Good afternoon, members of council and your worship, thank you for giving me this opportunity. On behalf of the emergency management group, I want to personally thank Thomas Crescent and the Regional District of Central Pootie for giving us this opportunity to write the 10-year fire master plan. My goal tonight is not to walk through all 277 pages, and I hope you appreciate that. But I put down 272 in here coming up, so somewhere we gain five pages, but what I want to do is give you an overview of this project, it was a significant project, it's laying out the future for the Creston Valley Fire Service. I will go through some recommendations to give you examples of them and why we came up with those recommendations. So. If it's not working, one might not be right.
Is it?
Hit the button.
Is it on?
Yes, could be. You have no little red light on.
We don't work over there.
Batteries have a way of dying, that's when you need one.
Yeah.
Chest burn, I'll be nowhere.
Okay. We're gonna date you.
Black magic.
One thing I want to emphasize here in this project was collaboration. That personally, as lead consultant in this project, I personally want to thank Fire Chief Jared Riel. Regional District Fire Chief Tristan Fest, I want to thank members of council for completing a survey and giving us feedback. I want to thank the public for answering the survey and giving us feedback. Want to thank Electoral Directors of ABNC for completing their survey and giving us feedback. We had significant feedback for this project, it was big picture, we got the feedback, it was very collaborative, talked to a lot of people on this, which allowed us to go forward. So what all did we do here? So I need to get a better angle, I'll just look at this one. So we went through, and this is not a step-by-step process, but I want to paint the picture of what we had to do in this project in the last seven months. We started in February 2025, we reviewed all the existing service levels, so what does the Creston Valley Fire Service do? What don't they do? What are they good at delivering? Where are some gaps? We conducted a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, very common in master plans, very common surveys. Get a snapshot, and what we do when we conduct these surveys is we're looking for common themes. It's, I call it connecting the dots, so if I have 20 people that completed a survey only to identify an issue, that's not really high on my list, but if I have eight or nine people identifying an issue, that's a common theme, so we connect the dots. So we identified a lot of that stuff through the surveys. The firefighters participated, we had the public, we had Mayor and Council, survey feedback was very good, and I'll give you some examples coming up. We reviewed the financials, operating capital budgets, capital reserve, that's standard. And I'll explain to you why the capital reserve is so important moving forward. We looked at the training program that Creston Valley Fire Service brings to its firefighters and communities. We looked at standard operating guidelines, that's very critical in the fire service to make sure that they're update, that they're current and they're relevant. We looked at the equipment, the personal protective equipment, we looked at the apparatus, we looked at fire station reviews. Then we went to looking at fire service contracts, mutually agreements, fire prevention education, we looked at fire, where are we? Apparatus assessment, so we looked at all apparatus, replacement schedules. All of that was part of this project, then we came up with the recommendations, then we provided 10-year outline. So 277 pages, 15 immediate recommendations, zero to one year, we have 33 short-term recommendations, one to three years. Four midterm, four to six years, one long term. What I want to say before I move on with these recommendations is the vast majority of these until staff time, there's not a lot of cost to them. It's staff time, it turns out to be a big work plan, to be honest with you. So the Creston Valley Service is, it's what I consider a young regional fire service growing, and it's going to have aches and pains like any other fire service. There's a lot of good going on here, and I want to emphasize that, a lot of good going on. This, this model is enhancing public safety, it's improving operational efficiency through cost of buying equipment, allocating equipment to specific stations, and it's delivering tangible results. And those results are lowering in some costs. The pooling resources, this is what's really unique here, the pooling resource is more strategic deployment, so the chief is able to look at different stations, have the correct apparatus to deploy, that's a very, very positive thing. We analyzed the call volume, I'll go through that right away, but again, it's a really good picture of what I consider a young regional fire service. So here's a call volume, and this is nothing new, there's no surprise here, so I've been in the consulting world for 11 years, and I've yet to come to a fire department where the call volume is going down. The trend is call volume is going up all the time, there's just more emphasis, more expectations placed on the fire service. But in, according to the chart, in 2023, I believe it was, right, 2023, there was a dip. It's just a lucky year, we just call that a lucky year, the trend is going to continue to go up. So at the end of last year was 824 calls, which is very busy for a community this size, fire service this size, and the chief today informed me that he's expecting 850 by the end of the year. So we know that there's more calls, the call volume is not going to go down, so it's really important to know that moving forward. What we do with all of our master plans is we follow, and I love this process, it just makes so much sense, we follow the three lines of defense from the Ontario Fire Marshal. The first line of defense is public fire safety, education, educate people, educate communities, when you do this, it reduces the risk. When you reduce the risk, your call volume decreases, property loss decreases, personal injuries decrease, firefighter injuries decrease. So that is the first step, educate, educate, educate. The second line of defense is follow and enforce safety standards enforcement, for the most part, that's legislation. Follow what the legislation requires you to do, make sure you're doing the inspections, make sure that you're upholding those codes and standards, and that people are following them. The last line of defense is emergency response, so when all this other stuff doesn't work, dial 911, fire department is coming. But what you want to have is a well-trained, well-supported fire department. Public survey feedback, so when you read the document, there's going to be a lot more of this, but I wanted to pick something else to paint the picture here, what the public thinks. So the public appreciates the professionalism of the Creston Valley Fire Service. They highlighted opportunities for improvement, particularly around public education, community visibility, and target outreach initiatives like smoke alarm programs. Now, when I read this, what I liked about it was, we already noted this while we're in the project. But for the public to say, hey, we'd like to see more XYZ, I thought, okay, everything's lining up here, so we saw it as consultants, the public sees it. So the gap has to be there, has to be there. So the other thing was emergency response time and ongoing firefighter training emerges top priorities. And, and I had to put that in there because when I was going through the surveys, reading this, it's such a pleasure to have community feedback going, this is a high priority for us. Emergency response, training, and the professional fire department. But they also underscored concerns related to staffing, apparatus costs, and long-term sustainability. Again, not a surprise to us as consultants, I was a former chief in the creative department for eight and a half years. Former chief for Parks and Forest for five with the paid-on-call department, I get it. When it's cost of apparatus state is, it's sticker shock, it is sticker shock, there's no other way to put it. So when you're looking at the cost of apparatus and delivery times, everyone, everybody is going, what is going on, how do we afford this? So I saw this feedback, I'm going, this makes sense as a taxpayer, this makes sense, I'm concerned. So I guarantee you, and I've never talked to the chief about this, but I guarantee you, he's concerned about the cost of apparatus. So it was nice to see that that was on the radar from the public. We assess the fire station, so I'm just going to get a little sip of water here. What I want to say here is, I'm not an engineer. I come with over 40 years of experience, but I'm not an engineer, so when we went into these fire stations, we look, this works, this doesn't work. Why don't you have this? Why don't you have that? So that was our limit of assessment. Overall, pretty good, except we'll get to one that I'll talk about right away. What standards and best practices did we follow? We just can't make this up, we can't, we have to follow something. So the National Fire Protection Association is what we call the industry best practice. The standards are not law, but they're best practices, so every piece of equipment that the chief buys has to meet NFPA standards. Otherwise, he's not buying it, he's just not going to put his firefighters at risk. When it comes to helmets, turnout gear, rope, gloves, fire trucks, you name it, there's a standard for it. So we follow to the best of our abilities the standards for a fire master plan. NFPA 1720 basically talks about volunteer fire departments, Creston Valley Fire Service falls under that. NFPA 121, providing fire emergency services to the public. We look at that standard and go, what is Creston Valley Fire Service doing? What aren't they doing? And we compare it. NFPA 1620, print and planning, very important for, for inspections and getting firefighters orientated to commercial or industrial buildings. NFPA 1971, protective assemblies for structure and proximity firefighting, turnout gear is going to be replaced every 10 years. The chief has a budget for that, same thing with helmets, boots, fire hose, fire hose has to be tested annually, so we're looking at the standards. So I won't go through all of them, but I want to provide a snapshot picture, NFPA has over 300 standards for the fire service alone. So we're going to use the ones that are applicable to what we are dealing with. Next is an example of 1720, so if you look at suburban area, 500,000 people per square mile, we calculated that, that Creston Valley Fire Service will fall within that. But this isn't, communities can gel, move back and forth in this. But for minimum staff to respond is 10 firefighters within 10 minutes, 80% of the time. So we look at this, we look at the data, and then we go, okay, are you meeting this or aren't you meeting that? And if the data isn't there, it's a gap, we say we need to start tracking this. So provincial legislation, legislation is, it's legislation, you can't say I don't like it, I don't want to follow it, you literally have no choice. So we used the Fire Safety Act, a new one that was, came in 2024, the Workers Compensation Act, Emergency Disaster Management Act, I think that was new last year? In 2024?
23.
20, thank you, and British Community Structure of Firefighters Minimum Training Standards, and BC Fire Code and BC Building and B C Fire Code and B C Building Code. So, under the Fire Safety Act, I just want to paint the picture under this new act. What the chief has to do, local authority may designate an individual as a fire inspector under subsection one, only if the individual meets a certain standards. So there's, the bottom, you'll see fire safety regulations, fire safety risk analysis, and basically, here's the minimum standards, taken right off their webpage. I just typed it word for word. There's significant knowledge needed to be an inspector. So, this is what the problem sets out, is the minimal, the minimal. Fire departments have to get there, they have to get there. So I want to, I want to move into some recommendations, am I talking too fast because I know that this is a long, but hey, I don't wanna, like, I know you've got a big agenda. So I wanna start off with zero to one year, what we think should be dealt with within the first year, and this really is what we wrote about to West Crescent Fire Station. As for the, the Regional District Central, could need to really work on this, and, and I'll tell you, I had conversation, Zoom meetings with staff, they're well aware of this, so it's, the recommendation is at at the point where we need to either ensure that that service is gonna continue or decommission, it's one or the other. The regional district's really gonna have to look at a cost benefit analysis of that, of that station. And at the end of the day, if they decide to move forward, it's gonna reduce liability, restore volunteer confidence, and ensure community coverage. So right now, there's a recruitment and retention issue with that station, if a lot of things that just aren't working, it's just not a fit, it's not a fit. And we wouldn't be negligent if we didn't identify it. So, from our perspective, we think that some progress should be made within the next year, on what's happening with that. Short-term recommendations, staff increase. We recommend a second assistant fire chief within the Crescent Valley Fire Service for many reasons. Many reasons, succession planning, leadership, a morsel to be in charge of a community risk assessment and a fire prevention and, and education uh portfolio. That should be their full-time job. There's enough work in there, we've drilled down enough, my partner Haida Fortune did an amazing job breaking down the amount of hours required, and just on that alone, there's a full-time job. It improves public and firefighter safety, so when you have compliance that goes back to our profiles, step one and step two, education and compliance standards. So when you have somebody doing that full-time, and meeting a schedule, identifying the risks, coming up with a, an inspection schedule, then you're going to, without a doubt, improve firefighter safety and public safety. You're gonna meet compliance and you're gonna add leadership capacity to the fire hall. Governance, so, one of the things that we know, so we're going through this, is you have regional district, you have the town of Preston. And there were some things that we went, there's some gaps here. And, and it took a while to come up with what we think is a really good plan, is creating a fire service advisory committee, and I'll just go to the next slide and I'll kind of walk you through it. It's, it's, for lack of a better word, it's almost another layer. But this layer is necessary, and I'll try to explain to my best why. If you have this fire service advisory committee, their focus is fire, nothing else. They get in there, this committee will collaborate, they will have the tough discussions, everything will be about what is a priority, what is the goal, what is the direction of the Crescent Valley Fire Service? This committee will have those discussions, whether it's operational and fund, funding, capital, capital reserve, whatever needs to be addressed in the fire service, will go to that committee. So represent be one from the town of Preston, um, one subject matter expert, and fire from the town of Preston, and two elected officials from this board. From the regional district, we definitely want electorials, A V and C directors at the table, without a doubt. And we want one subject matter expert from the regional district, so it's gonna be four on each side. Both sides will mutually agree to a chair. The fire chief Jared Rial, and the regional fire chief will be neutral, they're not gonna have a vote, they're gonna strictly be in advisory role. They're gonna be there at the meetings, they're gonna provide the input. The sole purpose of this is to collaborate and move in the same direction. So when you have two different bodies, the town of Preston, regional board of directors, doing what they both think is best, but not moving in the same direction, there can be some costs involved. There can be some inefficiencies experienced. This, we believe firmly, is a good move, good move to increase efficiencies, have everyone on the same page, and I'll give you an example, if you're gonna spend one point two million dollars on a truck, everybody should know what they want on that truck and why they're getting it. Not on a crescent deciding or a regional district. So, there's a lot of efficiencies here. Obviously, there have been educational component to this. I think it's out of the spectrum, but we believe this is a positive move, positive move for the, the Crescent Valley Fire Service. The next short-term example I wanna give you is develop the risk assessment, community risk assessment for the Crescent Valley Fire Service. It's very time-consuming, but if you don't know the risk that you have, if you don't know the probability of events happening, if you don't know the consequences, how can you plan for the future, how do you know, how many staff do you need, how do you know how many inspections have to be done? Need to know what those risks are. So when you do that, then you have the evidence. You have the information, and next slide here is the nine profiles that a community risk assessment would entail. Now this follows N F P A thirteen hundred, this is fire only. So whenever you do this, and we do it, it's, what are the impacts to the fire service? So we look at these nine different profiles, this will take months of work, months of work to do. Most communities hire an external consultant, if you're going to go down the path of hiring an assistant fire chief, put that on their portfolio, save yourself forty thousand dollars. So, once this is done, now you know the risks. You know high risk, medium risk, and low risk. Then the next step is come up with a community risk reduction plan. The whole idea here is reduce risk, take it away, prevent things from happening. So, that is a recommendation in the master plan. Uh, short-term, one to three years resilience, recommendation thirty nine, and fifty four is basically update emergency management bylaw to the new act, and expand fire support engagement through public workshops, property assessments, and community fuel mitigation targets. Wildland urban interfaces all around you. Crescent Valley Fire Service responds to a lot of wildland urban, urban interface fires. So when we do this, the resource recommendation is improving community resilience, reducing risk and enhancing inter-agency coordination. You're getting many parties to the table, and when you create these bonds, these working relationships, it makes an instant goal a lot smoother. Next recommendation, one to three, is on training, you have the training facility, so we look at the training facility. What can it and can it do, can't do? So, great opportunity here to expand on the training, and I, I've put in here, what we put in here is, you know, offer it to the R D C, uh, to other departments as a regional training facility. Now that may or may not work for the R D C, I don't know, but other department may embrace it. And the reason I put this in, the recommendation is, some revenue can come from this. But I don't wanna stand in front of council and say, hey, this is a golden goose, it's gonna bring in all the revenue you need, that's not how it works. But you can get some revenue from this and utilize that facility when Crescent Valley is using it, there's that potential. There's a potential to expand more. So, we believe that this is a good recommendation, and to, something to look at in the next one to three years. And again, there's not a lot of cause with this, this is really about being part of the work plan, and having the chief and his team look at it and see if this is feasible, we believe it is. Long-term, seven to ten years. This one is really easy, and if I had my way, I'd, I'd say, listen, seven to ten, seven the minimum, if at year five you go, holy cow, our call volume is going through the roof, we need to do this. And basically, what we're recommending is do a complete evaluation of your response data. Look at your response data, look at the call uptime, look at how many firefighters are coming, look at your station locations. Maybe seven years down the road, the stations aren't in the right location, they need to be moved. When you analyze all this, you're gonna know exactly what is coming from which station. Now, the chief will put in the equipment, make it more efficient, look at the call volume, and he may say, hey, we have so many calls right now, I need two more staff, I need two full-time staff, maybe I need four, I don't know. But we, the only way you can do this is look at the data. And that's why we say seven to ten years, and the data may say you need more staff. You may need another station, or you may need to close one. By doing this and having the data, it improves transparency. The numbers can't lie, they can't lie. So prove transparency, it provides long-term planning for the organization. Influence, and I apologize if I talk too fast. But I really was aware of the size of your agenda, so I didn't want to waste a lot of your time. It sets a direction, it's a ten-year plan, it's a significant plan. A lot of time and effort from everybody's part went into this plan, and we believe it's a good plan to move the Crescent Valley Fire Service forward. On the bottom is, my partner Haida is for his contact info, there's my contact info. If at any time you have a question regarding this, please feel free to email me, I'll be happy to answer it. And I'm open to any questions right now that anybody may have.
Any questions from council? Council, Baldwin.
I'm just thinking of connections to community colleges, South Kirk, College of the Rockies, that kind of thing. When you were talking about, it just twinked for me, um, I think, hadn't Nelson just entered a, a new phase with their, their training grounds?
I don't know.
It's only, it's only a couple of weeks old, that's why I mentioned it, but it was from Castle Guard and South Fair College, they initiated that development, but it seems like a fairly important component of all of this is our relationship with the colleges.
I agree, I, I, I'm gonna ask the chief to step in here, because I believe you had training with the College of the Rockies.
Yeah, so there's definitely that relationship, their council is well aware of that. And, uh, you know, those opportunities, uh, definitely need to be explored and exist. There's, um, um, you know, departments, um, that may not have, maybe better, uh, serviced or have better access to our uh, regional facility, um, as opposed to, uh, you know, using something in Nelson. And so, you know, those are some of the, uh, opportunities that we wanna try to leverage and explore.
Thanks, chief.
Any other questions? Any from our online guests either, but I appreciate the work that you put into this, how thorough it is. How big a report it is, we don't even have a list anything, because it's a big fat report.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate your time, and let me, uh, come here and present this. And have a good, good evening.
A lot of work.
Thank you.
Moving forward, we'll go with some recommendations here, first, that the presentation by the Old Republic Crescent Valley regarding Centennial Park Bar, Ballfield Project to receive. Can they add further to that, I'm not sure if we can add to that at this point. And we have their requests there to us, and I guess we would pursue fulfilling those requests and bring that back to a later meeting, I think is all we can do, Council, Hutton?
Well, Mike, you had suggested that maybe there needs to be a conversation with the rec program, and I don't know if that's something we need to have more information on before we but that can be included in there somehow.
That we, um, refer it to the rec center, or their input on the request as well.
Sorry, your worship, but you just today, just how it just referred to staff.
Okay, yeah, that will probably solve the whole problem. The recommendation that it's received and, and be referred to staff, so everybody's good with that?
Yep.
Right? And secondly then, that the presentation by Mr. Les Carple of Emergency Management Group regarding Crescent Valley Fire Service Fire Master Plan and the report titled Crescent Valley Service Master Plan, Crescent Valley Fire Service Master Plan dated October fourteenth from the Director of Protective Services B received, so we will have received that, and sure there's more to come on, all that information. So we'll move on then to the council direction requests from the Director of Community Services regarding a public space booking program.
For your municipal services and coordinator and planner, you should present those.
Thank you, worship. This is great, my presentation's gonna look so short. Alright, so, thank you, and today I will be presenting an overview of, uh, public space booking program, um, including all the associated bylaws and policy amendments. So this really follows council's direction from last year to improve the efficiency, clarity, and transparency around our public space approvals, as well as to account for additional costs. And they're not currently accounted for, there's barricades, and to direct a lot of those booking requests to staff. So in twenty twenty four, council asked staff to delegate more, um, park bookings to staff, and specifically allow for staff to approve park bookings that involves liquor service. So at that time, staff reviewed the existing policies and bylaws and identified that there were thirteen documents needing updates, um, as any changes to one really affected another one. So the proposed, uh, bylaw and policy changes aim to address some of those inconsistencies, such as definitions, procedures, and enforcement across all the existing bylaws and policies. So to do this, staff are proposing some new bylaws and mending bylaws, um, various policy changes, including the repeal of several policies, as much of those have been kind of transferred over into the bylaws. So our goal really with this project was to create a comprehensive and consistent, um, public space booking program. So getting into the meat of it, I'm gonna try and present these bylaws, um, to capture how the effects are cascading. I'll pause after each one for questions, but some of them might be answered as we move on, um, to the next one. So first is the, um, parks, trails, and public spaces bylaw, so this is a complete rewrite of our current parks bylaw. Um, currently, that bylaw contains kind of general rules around public spaces and specific rules for some of our parks for booking procedures. Many of the other booking procedures for our parks are contained within our parks, um, a public spaces booking policy. And this structure kind of led to some inconsistencies around enforcement, application of both the, um, policy and the bylaw. So to resolve that, that's why we decided to opt for the, the rewrite scenario. So some of the key changes in this rewrite, um, this bylaw now really focuses on just public space rules and regulations, as opposed to, um, procedural information, all that procedural information around booking our public spaces has been moved over to a new events bylaw. It helps to clearly identify on and off-leash dog parks, as well as expand some of the, um, expands the scope of our on-leash dog parks, clearly regulates barbecue use in those areas, it has extended park hours, um, from six AM to eleven PM, originally it was seven AM to ten PM. This helps to really allow for, um, some of our bookings where people are asking for additional time for setup and takedown. Um, as you'll see in the parks one, that noise is, and the booking is still gonna contain within that seven to ten, but this is just to allow them in there to set up and take down. It also helps to clarify, uh, the empowerment and removal of public space, um, of items left in public space. So our bylaw references our traffic's regulation bylaw, which has to do with the empowerment on our roadways. Um, but it kind of leaves out that piece in our parks, so that leads me to the next piece. We're keeping that reference to our traffic, um, regulations bylaw, uh, but we've expanded that scope to include our public spaces, um, so the process has kind of stayed the same. Um, but now, there's just that addition of our public spaces in there. Okay, so on to the meat of the project, which really events bylaw, this is a new bylaw for us. It helps to kind of encompass, um, many of our policies, including like our street booking policy, public space booking policy, um, sidewalk use policy. Um, sidewalk use policy, um, our parks bylaw. And we have a special events bylaw as well. So this helps to kind of bring all those things together into one bylaw and remove kind of the shuffling between policies and bylaws to get those events approved. Um, so some of the key highlights of that are really helps to simplify and consolidate our booking procedures. It significantly reduces the amounts going to council, so most of these can generally be approved by staff, except for large um, bookings and private, um, outdoor public space bookings. It helps to clearly identify when other departments need to be brought into that approval process, such as infrastructure services or um, emergency services. Um, it also helps to introduce some clear rules for liquor, food trucks, fire pits, dogs at events, parades and safety procedures. Um, and it introduces a council appeal process for bookings that are denied, um, by staff. So if staff chooses on whatever ground that that, they don't wanna proceed with that booking, that plant has an opportunity to come to you. Um, and ask for clarity on that and approval possible. So moving on to our, our business license amendment. So this really had, um, focused around our commercial vendors. We have commercial vendors out and about, and we also have them at our events. So um, right now they're mostly regulated through policy, and according to the policy, commercial vendors have to obtain a permit in addition to their business license before they operate. The maximum amount of time that these permits are valid for is six months. Um, this has led to some confusion, um, not everyone picking up their vending permit or renewing them. Um, which, yeah, has been a little bit of a challenge for enforcement and just education around that. Um, so to resolve some of, uh, those challenges, we are proposing, including the commercial vending policy kind of rules and regulations into our business by license bylaw that kind of seemed like the best fit at that time. So how it's organized is that vendors will, as per usual, receive their, um, commercial business license. They're no longer, they no longer have to disclose every single little location that they'll be in, which was kind of the use of the permit, we could keep track where they were, but you know, they're not renewing their permits. We don't really see that anyway. And what it's done is, um, so it's a little bit more free to be out in the public spaces, other than some of our parks, which have separated out, um, vending areas for food trucks and your little stand mobile vendors. So for the most part, your food trucks are in areas that don't disrupt, you know, the life of the park, but if you have a little kid selling ice cream next to the playground, then that gives them that option. Um, so that's most of the program stuff. The rest is kind of, um, pieces that just fit into this program around fees, delegation of authority. Do we have any questions at this time about kind of the meat of the program? No? Okay, easy. Okay, so delegation of authority, that's a bylaw. We had to manage this to really shift it around for staff to handle most of those approvals. It also is going to take away, um, staff-specific approval for commercial vending, because that's gonna fall into our business license approval process. Um, so it's captured there anyway. Fees and charges, um, so this had a significant overhaul. How we do it at this point is we have different fees depending on what public space you're booking in. Which is a little bit challenging. So this, uh, fee structure really helps to simplify what that is. Um, you know, if you're a large booking or a general booking or whatever, it just does it based on your booking size. Um, because originally, like how it's written now, we tried to capture some of those costs in your booking fee around barricades or some additional costs, but it was really hard to accurately reflect that. And then when you needed those services in another park, we didn't have a way to capture those costs. So those costs have been separated out, um, kind of as like, if you need barricades, it's kind of like a rental fee, for lack of a better word, you need to charge for that. So we can, um, account for staff time to place those out and then we'll. There's also an amendment there for an empowerment of, um, an empowerment fee for items found at public spaces, where we didn't have our previous fee for that. Um, and then we also, of course, um, updated our business license category. Previously, we had in our mobile vendors, we specifically excluded commercial vendors from that, because they had to pay for a separate permit to operate. Uh, but now we've just included them in the mobile to remove that commercial permit, or sorry, commercial vending permit. Um, our noise control bylaw, we amended that one to allow for noise that reasonably emanates from a booking. Um, right now it only specifically addresses Millennium Park, and we know that we have bookings in lots of our other public spaces. And then the bylaw notice of enforcement is relatively unexciting part. It just helps to capture all of those things where we could have bylaw notice of enforcement and the, um, it's not the fee, the fine attached to those things. So that's basically it. I'm going to wrap, uh, section. So basically from here, um, depending either with amendments or, or as presented, staff will bring forward, um, a crest for a decision with the, um, bylaws prepared for reading. We do require to have public notice for the business license bylaw, so we'll just be grouping the bylaws kind of as a package moving forward. And finally, any policy, um, repeals or changes will be brought forward for council consideration at the time of adoptions, just to ensure that there's no gaps in our current, um, service.
Counsel Baldwin.
What I wasn't ready to say is while we have this comprehensive look, uh, bylaw compliance or, or monitoring is an expensive process potentially, if you have to bring somebody out on overtime or something like that. Has, because a lot of these things do run till the wee small hours, or they have loose dogs or something like that, that may, may take somebody out of the normal Monday to Friday, uh, for our, our bylaw officer. Has that been anticipated? Is there any way to go, well, this, this particular event could get unruly, um, and something being applied or subcontracted or something like that, or somebody designated to basically make sure that things don't get out of hand. Because finding out about it five days later isn't really gonna help, when all we've got is complaints after the fact. So.
Yeah, good question. Um, it hasn't been accounted for in this process. Correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe we are going through a separate process to kind of account for our bylaw enforcement hours at this time.
Any further questions? Your inon will go with the recommendation that, that council receives the October fourteen, twenty twenty five council direction request titled Public Space Booking Program for Information. And further, that council directs staff to present the following bylaws for council consideration at an upcoming council meeting. The Business License Amendment Bylaw, number twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty five. Events Bylaw, number two oh two nine, twenty twenty five. Parks Trails Public Spaces Bylaw, number two zero three zero, twenty twenty five. Delegation of Authority Amendment Bylaw, number two zero three one, twenty twenty five. Noise Control Amendment Bylaw, number two zero three two, twenty twenty five. Bylaw Notice of Enforcement Amendment Bylaw, number two zero three three, twenty twenty five. Fees and Charges Amendment Bylaw, number two zero three five, twenty twenty five. And Traffic Regulations Amendment Bylaw, number two zero four zero, twenty twenty five. We're good with that? Alright, recommendation agreed to, so thank you very much. Moving on then, my council direction request from the Manager of Engineering regarding speed limit reduction community wipe on citizen communities.
Thank you, your worship and counsel. So, this report today responds to some public concerns about speeding and industrial safety in Creston. It outlines some options for implementing reduced speed limits. Uh, evaluates some associated costs and recommends a phased approach that hopefully aligns with strategic, uh, council strategic goals and pending future legislation. Um, public letters have been received. Um, they totally flagged, um, concerns with safety around parks, schools and residential areas. They also flagged some community-wide speed reduction pilots that are being um, experienced in some other communities, notably Kimberley, Bernie, um, and some of the lower mainland in Alberta. The Creston Multimodal Transportation Plan recommended reducing speed limits to thirty kilometer an hour in key areas. I referenced map six in the report. That was sort of the key areas that they looked at. That map was sort of generated based on, uh, community feedback that we had through the open houses that identified corridors that the community felt were candidates for a reduced speed limit. That the number of people that were walking or cycling within those corridors as opposed to just vehicle traffic. So it was sort of a, uh, a, a planned approach to a thirty kilometer hour speed limit. Also, um, just give you some background information. The traffic analyzers that we use in the community were at sixty-four locations for a five-year period between twenty twenty and twenty twenty five. It sort of indicated, and those are residential areas, kind of indicated that the average speed in Creston is about twenty-eight kilometers an hour. Eighty-fifth percentile is around forty-one kilometers an hour. And that compliance with speed limits is about eighty-seven percent. Um, reading between the lines, that eighty-fifth percentile at thirty-one, and, you know, roughly thirteen percent non-compliant would sort of indicate that the vast majority are traveling forty kilometers an hour. But everybody else is kind of at fifty or above. So I'm not saying there aren't any areas that have concerns with speed, but for the most part, community-wide speed is fairly reasonable within the community. The radar board placement is also based on customer complaints. So we typically go to areas with the boards that people already feel there is a speeding issue. So we're seeing that the speeding isn't as bad as they think it is, but we're also targeting those areas. So, you know, if we did it across the board, we may see a reduction in speeds to sort of balance out, because I'm sure there's a lot of areas where people aren't complaining that the speeds are quite a bit lower than what we're seeing in that concerning area. So anyways, that's a little bit about the background. Some of the key issues, um, there are some jurisdictional limits, like Northwest Boulevard and Erickson Road, that were identified in the public concerns that are not under town jurisdiction. So I haven't factored those into the report. Those would have to be brought up with the province. And then it looks at their good movement and things like that. So, um, but I haven't addressed those in, in this report, because they are not. They don't fall under our authority. Uh, current legislation, the Motor Vehicle Act identifies that the default speed limit within municipalities is fifty kilometers an hour. The Union of B C Municipalities has requested, I believe, at least three times in the last five years that the province change the Motor Vehicle Act to allow blanket speed limits to be changed by municipalities at their limits. And that that legislation is that sign that you see on the boundary of, as you were pulling into this town, that says fifty kilometers an hour unless otherwise posted. U B C M has asked for that to be changed to thirty kilometers an hour or forty. Because without that legislation, every road that's not fifty kilometers an hour has to be signed both directions in each block to be able to enforce. We've got a lot of school zones and playground zones, and those are signed as such for that legislation. We extend that blanket change to the municipality. All of a sudden, there's a significant impact on the number of signage that we have to have a place to be able to enforce those speeds. So, um, also, and it was really nice to see it in the two letters that we received, that council received. They indicated that signage is not a solution, that traffic calming has to be considered. And I agree with that one hundred percent. You can't just slap up signs and expect people to follow signs. Especially if you've had wide roads like Hillside or something like that, where you've got a fourteen-meter-wide road. No parking, and people, you know, you could drive eighty K down that road and feel comfortable. So you have to traffic calm those streets, not all of them, but some of them. To be able to make it, to, for drivers to feel uncomfortable traveling at anything above the quotient speed limit. And at thirty kilometers an hour, that means narrowing that carriageway to about six and a half meters width. Or two lengths of traffic. So, you know, um, community-wide, there are fairly significant costs we're looking at for residential areas. We're looking at about five hundred and fifty signs, three hundred thousand dollars plus. It's about thirty-four kilometers of roads that would see that speed limit. Now, if you tack on the traffic calming on top of that, that could be another two hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollars to traffic calm those neighborhoods, and that gets very expensive. And that is just what we would have to do unless the legislation changes. Now, pretty optimistic that the legislation will change at some point. Um, just because of the number of municipalities that are concerned about it. Um, and what's happening in some of these other pilots, I think the, the province will come around. I just don't know when. Um, so there is a bit of a phased approach that sort of follows the recommendations, the multimodal traffic plan, uh, transportation plan that looked at about eighty-five block area. Um, you know, we could re-sign that for around seventy-one thousand dollars. You know, that doesn't include the traffic calming features that might be triggered unintended consequences of lowering the speed. We might have to go in and do that traffic calming. Um, so there is that upper side, you know, we could have to do these in, in, in a number of years to sort of deal with pinch points that we create within those residential roads. Um, but, you know, the recommendation I'm looking at is doing a phased approach. And budgeting in the twenty twenty-six budget year for signage placement on about fifty-five blocks. Um, deferring community-wide signage until the legislation is in place to sort of support that. But then still prioritize traffic calming, if it's needed on some of those roads that we're targeting. The benefits of the phased approach is, um, you know, it improves safety for pedestrians and cyclists. It's cost-effective compared to the whole blanket approach. Uh, it aligns with council's strategic plans, connectivity, safety and environmental stewardship. Do some greenhouse gas emissions, I always gotta slip that in there. And it may be response to some public concerns we have on some of them. The other alternatives that were considered were, you know, all residential neighborhoods. Um, you know, looking at three hundred thousand dollars for signs plus traffic calming, could push that type of a project up upwards of, you know, seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand dollars over a period of time. Um, and then the other alternative is do nothing and just wait for the legislation to sort of fall. So that's sort of, um, the report in a really quick summary. Um, if anybody has any questions, I can specifically address some of your concerns.
Counselor Hotten?
Um, yeah, I'm just curious. When you talk about traffic calming measures, you're looking mostly at speed bumps. But do you ever add additional controlled intersections with four-way stop signs and because I, I think that could be cheaper than.
Um, yeah, traffic calming, speed bumps, we see those. There are a lot of other, a lot of other things that we can use. Uh, narrowing the carriageways, bump outs at intersections to, to create physical pinch points. Um, you know, creating chicanes in the road where you have traffic moving along and then you shift it from parking on one side to parking on the other, and you sort of move the traffic so it doesn't create a, a linear line. Four-way stop-controlled intersections are not necessarily a good measure. Like, they can be, they can be implemented, but for a four-way stop sign to really work well, you have to have the same amount of traffic on all lakes. Right? If you, you look at Sixteenth Avenue and Hillside, for example, ninety percent of the traffic is on Sixteenth Avenue. Ten percent is on Hillside. So what happens is people after using that intersection become ingrained that I stop on Sixteenth Avenue, I never see anyone on my left or my right because it's such a low volume of cross-traffic, that they blow through the stop signs. So unless you have a, quite an equal balance on all four legs that if you come pull to a stop and there's somebody else there, you know, and, and you proceed that way. Unless you have that environment, four-way stop signs are not necessarily recommended as traffic calming features.
Counselor Baldwin.
Uh, two-part question. Um, but then just to lead up to that, I, I, I should say that I'm in favor of waiting until the province changes the legislation personally. Like anything else is a waste of taxpayers' money. The reason for that is that we don't have any evidence that there is a speeding problem beyond perception. Is that the radar, that you, the radar point, uh, that you've done already already tells us that we drive like we're in the funeral procession around here, in bigger cities and I just go. But the, the point is that what what problem that is documented are we trying to fix on our own, when in fact, if the provincial legislation comes in, there's almost no cost to implementing it. I mean, then you just throw your hands up and go, what, we're gonna be like every other town? Great. Um it not much to complain about, phased approach, I get it, but I'm just saying that that could be irrelevant. If in fact, it's a given. The other, the the final part to this is that what problem is it going to solve within the boundaries of the town? That would just people just get down on Highway twenty one and blast off at a hundred K or. Uh anywhere in Erickson or Blister or anywhere else, which is basically you're gonna take up that some semi pent up frustration with pace. Have there been any studies on uh injuries from speeding vehicles? Um any accidents, like in other words, can we document? The the parameters of the problem we're trying to solve rather than perception. As you said, perception is that people are speeding, but in many cases, they're not, even that, they're not even going over thirty, so. I guess I I'm I'm more of a measurable type guy, if we're gonna spend all this money. What problems are we actually uh correct?
You're you're bringing up the speeds. We do not have a speeding issues. If you consider our speed limit is fifty kilometers an hour. If you think that fifty kilometers an hour is too fast for for a state and community. Uh well, then you'll the argument starts to come into play. The the data is sort of showing that forty kilometers an hour is a fairly reasonable speed limit. There are a lot of studies out there that show, and you know, and they they reference those in, you know, in in the letters of concern that were received. There are lots of studies that show how injury severity is reduced significantly as the speed drops. So, you know, the the studies are there. Um you know, as a community and and the strategic plan also talks about council's goals for connectivity, getting more people walking. Making people feel more comfortable and safe on the roads, so you know. Fifty kilometers an hour in a residential neighborhood, the minority of residential streets is probably way too fast. Now, the way our grid system and and our cul-de-sacs and everything are set up in a residential, in most residential areas in Creston. It's almost impossible to drive fifty kilometers an hour. So so people, you know, so so a signage reduction really makes a lot of sense. What's the magic number, thirty, forty? I kind of like forty because, you know, you can put signs up and you don't throw the vast majority into a knock. It's issue, so traffic calming features might be at a bare minimum to save some of those costs. It gives people the sense that the community is doing something and they feel safer on the roads and. Um you know, so that that.
But that wasn't being offered to us.
So but but yeah, that's that's, you know, I think that's future. I think provincial legislation has a lot to do with it. Um you talk about what if Creston does something, but what happens in Erickson or Canyon? And that is that that consistency of legislation across the community. And I think that is, you know, probably the biggest thing, you know, and we could always run into trouble. Even if we were to put fifty five signs up on on candidate roads, people get confused. What is the speed limit, is it fifty or is it thirty? You know, signage, every block, all directions is critical to that, so. Um you know, we're sort of, the the, there are some concerns without a legislation change for sure. Um to if the legislation does change, it's not no cost to us because now all those roads we want to maintain at fifty have to be signed at fifty. So you're basically flipping flipping the signs, you know, so it is not coming at no cost, there are there are implications. Um but at least we can manage it, I just, I sort of beat around the bush, I hope I answered.
Yeah, I just thought waiting for the the legislation to be the most physically responsible, but I understand all the other. Erratical risks, so. But you know, I personally, I would be, I think a lot of people would support forty, and I know that was something that came up in. Great Victoria, that people could get their heads around that, but they they just couldn't go, cars just like, don't want to just go thirty kilometers an hour.
I think Abington, they're residential, so. It's much easier number for you to adjust to it.
But are we are we actually ticketing people for speeding at this point?
Uh you know, I think that's a question you have to ask Harrison. I I know I have heard experience with R C N P members trying to issue tickets on somewhere thirty kilometer roads. And not issuing because they didn't feel the signage was enough for support. So, um you know, I think in order to be able to enforce it, you have to have a very robust. Um signage policy or and federal place or provincial.
Yes.
Exactly, so, um you know, I I think even with the thirty K roads that we have. We probably could clean up the act a little bit and get some better signage out there. To make it easier to enforce if if enforcement is what we want to do.
Counselor Hall.
Is there any opportunity for speed cameras? Have ever we looked into cost of those?
I have, but even wasn't.
Okay, I don't know, they might be cost prohibitive, but you know, if there is only specific problem areas.
When I was in Gregory, we installed a number of red light and speed cameras on the lights. Um it was a million dollar project, depending, we're booking at thirty five or forty locations, they don't come cheap.
No.
They, you know, and then you still have to have, um you know, people reviewing the data, issuing tickets and things like that. And, you know, the simplest place to put them is on on corridors with red lights. Where you're have higher speeds anyways because it's provincial highway network. If something I haven't even looked at.
Okay.
Okay, now hearing any further questions, we'll go with the recommendation that council adopt a phased approach toward thirty kilometer an hour residential area speed zones. Beginning with the implementation of the map six recommendations from the Creston multimodal transportation plan. As a starting point for community speed limit reductions. That council direct staff to prepare a budget sheet for the twenty twenty six budget process for this approach. In the amount of seventy one thousand five hundred dollars. That council defer full community wide signage installation until legislative changes permit a blanket approach. Reducing costs and improving consistency and further that traffic calming measures be prioritized on higher risk streets. To support speed reduction and improve safety regardless of signage strategy. We're good with that?
Were we wanting that to be in forty kilometers? Or was there a discussion, you mentioned forty kilometers, so the phased approach towards thirty, was that gonna stay here or?
Well, at at this point, all we're asking for is to bring it back to council for consideration during the budget process. You know, I think maybe we've been having.
Yeah, I'm good with that until we can have a fuller, fuller conversation.
Okay, because it's good to come back to us with a full conversation this way, which is kind of what we want. The underlying fear of Counselor Baldwin is he gets a speeding ticket on his e-bike if we reduce the speed.
Exactly, hell, I could walk faster with that.
So next is the council direction request from the manager of engineering regarding Colas Street lift station gravity option. Direction to apply for strategic priorities fund grant funding.
Thank you again, um back in August, council provided recommendations that. I was be able to apply for the community more strategic priority fund for the Paul Street. Upgrading, I received an email a couple of weeks ago from the the grant people. Uh the grant coordinator basically said, you know what, as part of the screening process, we. We recognize some deficiencies and would like you to consider strengthening the resolution to facilitate to. To help move through the 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 process of of the of the grant review. So this memo talks about the two additions, amending that original August uh resolution to include. That council commits to providing overall grant management for the lift station project and to also. Indicate that you guys are aware that if the budget exceeds the grant application. That we are on the hook for that and that you would support any covering cost overruns if that if that ever occurs through the execution of the project.
Or you're almost there, just the, I asked this question before, what if we don't get the full grant? And this is working on the basis of if they give us the full grant for our costs, what if we don't get the full grant? Are we still on the hook for the 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 balance of the?
Uh well, the 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 application I submitted was for one hundred percent. So I I believe they would either approve it at a hundred percent or turn it down, and then we'd have to reply at a different, so that that is my belief right now.
Okay. Counselor Hart.
Yeah, I'm just curious, um if you submitted fully for for the cost of equipment and time. For installation, what type of overages or overruns could we anticipate seeing? Or or what hasn't been anticipated that we potentially need to cover outside of the granting dollars?
So so the grant application wanted a a cost estimate with about a twenty five percent contingency. So the 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 budget that we applied for, that one point six million dollars, six five million dollars, included a twenty five percent contingency for house overruns. Uh those overruns could be inflationary in nature, it could be, uh you know, we encounter ground conditions that are. Much more difficult to 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 construct in, you know, it could be in any number of of, you know, things like that. So uh what they're, the provinces has acknowledged that there are cost overruns, but they want it capped at twenty five percent. What they're looking for is anything that might exceed that twenty five percent over over our budget as as being something that council looks at. Um with the grant application, they did ask the question, if there are cost overruns. What components of the projects could be scaled back or reduced in order to bring it in there? And there was a number of those that could be exercised before you're actually hit with a cost over. So there there are opportunities for us to trim back the project. Um maybe not seed and topsoil, things like that, you know, to save some money, reduction of man and events and things like that. So there are some things that we can look at.
Before it comes to us.
Before.
Counselor Dubois.
Just wondering, um whoever has the answer to this question is if. If let's say we do have the cost overruns, or can we use the B C Grown Communities Fund towards towards those?
This grant is stackable, so we can apply other grants that we may get to match our, to 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 meet our contribution accord.
Yeah, I'll leave the, I'll leave the lengthy recommendation, a lot of them are long. The council received the council direction request dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty five from the manager of engineering. And the report entitled Collins Street Lift Station Gravity Option. Direction to apply for strategic priorities on grant funding. The resolution numbers three one zero dash twenty five from the August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five regular council meeting. Be amended to read as follows. That council receives the council direction request dated August twelfth, twenty twenty five from the manager of engineering. And the report titled Collins Lift Station Capacity Increase Assessment. Prepared by Associated Engineering and dated March twenty twenty five. That council directs staff to reply under the strategic strategic priorities fund. Capital infrastructure stream administered by U B C M for grant funding. To replace the Collins Lift Station with a sixteen hundred meter gravity main. In the amount of one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars capital costs and engineering. That council requests staff to include a twenty twenty six budget sheet. That considers the replacement of a Collins Lift Station with a sixteen hundred meter gravity main. Based on one hundred percent of net eligible project costs being covered under the successful strategic priorities. Fund grant application for consideration during the twenty twenty six budget process. The council commits to providing overall grant management for the Collins Lift Station replacement project. And further, that council will budget for and cover any cost overruns that may arise during the execution of the project. We're good? Anybody not mad, yeah, okay, thank you very much. Thanks Colin.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the council direction request from the director of protective services regarding extreme weather response plan.
Thank you, worship council. So uh we wanted to bring our report forward just to give a. Uh an update on some considerations for the extreme weather response plan, so. Um this uh plan uh is for all at risk residents of Creston, it includes both extreme heat and cold events. And uh under the Emergency Management Disaster Act, it is responsibility to town of Creston to create plans to help mitigate these hazards. So um wanna focus on like the activation criteria, the staffing and some of the locations. So our activation criteria is highlighted, um but. And we talked about the cold, extreme cold to start. And this uh starts, uh you know, prior to the season with, you know, information and and exercises and. You know, staff being ready to to accommodate. Um activation is not necessarily just based on temperature. There's there's other factors that need to be uh included in that or considered. And so you can see there, we've got a a list, this is on on page eight uh of the report, but um you know. Temperature is is one factor and then any of the other following conditions like, uh you know, rain or snow, wind. Uh humidity, uh rainfall, uh you know, so it's it's not just dictated by temperature or Environment Canada. Um um uh sorry, Environment Canada uh alerts. Um you know, this is something that we've done the research uh for our valley, our community, and this is what we feel would would work best for us. Uh so, you know, cold uh is one, heat is another one. Um heat is not just about daytime temperatures, uh it's it's really those overnight temperatures, you know. Can we cool off overnight uh to to be able to sustain? And humidity plays a a large part in that as well. And so those are, those are all factors that we're looking, and again, not just relying on Environment Canada advisories or alerts. So um staffing considerations for these um these. Uh uh emergency warming or cooling centers um are eligible for provincial funding. Uh you know, and so when we activate, we will get a task number, we can submit um for expenses. And um but the responsibility of operating falls on the town of Creston. And so uh you know, we have to come up with a staffing of of this. Now, last year, we were able to uh utilize paid on call firefighters. Uh some of our our existing full time staff and uh we were able to manage that. Now, um going forward, uh you you know, we're still trying to decide what the the best method is, you know. Having, you know, volunteers ready to go, sorry, not volunteers, but having a list of people who are able to work. You know, and 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 called at a moment's notice. Um you know, utilizing some of those, uh you know, potentially some paid on call firefighters or existing staff. Now with staffing though, there comes some some requirements. So training uh is important, so we want to make sure first aid is is covered off. Um although there's not, you know, food prep per se, like meal prep, there is, you know, food service and so. Food safe certification is is important. Um de-escalation training is is always important, uh and so de-escalation training for staff. Um or, you know, having some sort of security to help in in any situation. WMS is uh is pretty standard for all workplaces. And then um you know, the locks on training in this day and age is important, uh you know, for for. Just about everybody, really. We do anticipate, you know, a cost uh could be anywhere from four hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars per person. To achieve that level of training for place down. Some of the locations, um so you'll probably remember last year or or last winter. Uh is when we operated our uh warming center. Uh we were able to use the um old wet dorm space out of the old ambulance station. Uh some some pros and and cons to that, but you know, it was a good space that had the amenities. Uh that were needed and it allowed us, because there was nobody else in there. It allowed us to to kind of leave it set up for the time period we needed. Uh so we weren't having to take things down and move things around uh every day. Um we've explored some other options, uh you know, so the library has a uh a conference room. That actually has a small kitchen attached to it, separate washrooms. Uh it's got its own public entrance to it that can be locked off from the rest of the of the building there. And so um you know, a a possibility to use that space. Now, we would have to enter into agreements to be able to use that, but that's not onerous. The problem there is that there's lots of other public groups that use that space or book that space. And um you know, we could have an activation criteria. Our activation thresholds hit and we're like, okay, we want to use the space. Well, they might have it booked out for a week's worth of meetings with another user group. So we've got to be mindful. So we've gotta be mindful of that. Uh, we did look at the Armitage Building and, um, you know, it's definitely interesting there. There's lots of user groups within that, in that building. So, we would wanna make sure and consult and, and understand, uh, you know, uh, their issues, if any. But there's also, um, uh, good areas that are, are secured and locked off. And so when we looked at it, we thought, well, yes, for a, a warming or even a cooling space, you know, we could use a small portion and the rest of the building would maybe be secured. Right? From the offices or the, uh, other users in that building. Um, um, so, you know, again, if, if the, uh, uh, there are some cons there, we could set up. Uh, but any ta-, you know, takedown, everything would have to be removed. It couldn't be left up in place as the business opens up for, for the name type of thing. Uh, lastly, we have, you know, this room here and this room has actually been used, um, in the past uh, for, um, for, for a cooling center. Uh, so it, it's, it's, um, does work, but again, you know, just in the building here, how some of the, some of the equipment and, and that kind of stuff, you know, may present some, some problems. And clearly this room is, you know, it's used regularly for, for meetings and other events and stuff like that. We do have a, uh, um, a tent, uh, we, we've, we've, we've shown that to you guys. So, we've got a, a tent that can be set up in different locations, uh, and this would be for cooling only. Um, you know, and we've used, um, uh, we haven't used this tent as a cooling center, but we've used other tents. We have misting fans. You know, we can set up picnic tables, we can offer cold water, those kind of things. And so it's a nice gesture to, to, to help uh, for people who are, who are coming by. The nice thing with the tent, so originally, uh, or in the past, it's been set up at the emergency services building, um, but we're starting to, you know, think about or explore ideas of, you know, could it be set up in other strategic locations, you know, that might better serve, uh, those who need it? So, um, that's it. If there's any questions, we are looking for, uh, yeah, to bring this to, um, you know, the next council meeting for adoption unless there's, there's any changes or any questions that people might have.
Is there any private locations that were looked at or is that not an option?
Uh, private, no, we didn't consider.
Like say the Legion.
Private, yeah, we, we, um, uh, focused on, on, you know, town-owned or public spaces, you know, that, that, uh, the record letter is there, but we didn't approach any other user groups, so.
In terms of staffing, uh, the E F C R funding is for incremental costs. So in other words, if it's staff, presumably if, you know, it's two thirty in the afternoon, you're not gonna go over there because you're taking somebody out or like, or that is a good idea. Because I know it's only for overtime, um, in terms of claiming for.
No, 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 there, the, you know, the, uh, the task number in the province will cover wage expenses. Not, it has nothing like, there's, there's different criteria, there's different policy if, if we were to use this room.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, I'm working eight thirty to five thirty.
Sure.
Uh, I can be in this room and the town of Creston is already paying me to, to, to work that day.
Right.
They've just reassigned me to duties of managing the warming center. Yeah, so that would cover that. But then if they put in another six hours after that to manage it, they would cover something like that. But, but saying that though, if, if, you know, we had this, uh, warming center open up overnight last winter was the idea. And so it opened at eight o'clock, seven o'clock till seven o'clock or eight o'clock till eight o'clock. Um, the people that worked that, um, tho- those wages were covered both, right? Uh, you know, we, we don't have, there was no capacity for us to, um, reassign somebody from those hours.
Right.
Uh, uh, cause it's just outside of our, our scope, right?
Um, can I just ask, um, you talked about four hundred and fifty dollars per employee for training costs? Is that covered through granting dollars or through task number for activation? Like, we have to do that.
We, we would have to do that. So that would be on us, on, on council to, you know, prepare for and be ready to, to do that. Now, there's, um, yeah, so, you know, and, you know, we talked about the paid-on-call firefighters and they come to the table with, with the majority. And so, um, you know, we were fortunate last year to not have to put anybody through training because, you know, we had, we had the right people involved there. But no, that would be a, a cost that, you know, would be, would be spared by us to, to be ready.
Yeah, I'll read the recommendation that for us is that council receives the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five council direction request titled Extreme Weather Response Plan from the Director of Protective Services. And further, that council directs staff to present the town of Creston Extreme Weather Response Plan at an upcoming regular council meeting for council's consideration. Good with that? Alright. Thank you, Jerry. Now, I'm going to read the recommendation that arrives from the committee as a whole. Good with that? Okay. Yeah, we'll start with the recommend, a request for decision from the C A O regarding exempt workout compensation review.
We have official resolution, but, and a vote from that, please.
Oh, sorry. All in favor of me? It was written on the agenda as a recommendation though.
Exactly, yeah.
But it's all in favor of going to. Motion is carried. Okay, so now then, then request for decisions from the C A O regarding exempt staff compensation review. Mike?
Long meeting. Line starts over again. She's in action.
Probably gonna miss the whole hockey game in a minute.
Oh, thanks God, it's so early in the season.
Yeah, still critical.
It's still critical, yes. It's just for the mad wasn't in our gallery.
Yeah, I would like to reconvene and we will go with our C A O then with liberation.
Okay, thank you very much, worship. So I'll try to, and again, I apologize about the lengthy agenda today.
It's true, right?
Not sure who actually added the most to it, so. But I'll try to keep this presentation short. I wanted to be able to walk through the presentation and answer any questions by council. And so I'll try to work through this quickly because we still got a bunch of things to do. So this presentation provides a review of the 2025 compensation survey for exempt staff, outlining the findings, recommendations, and implementation strategies to assist council in their informed decision-making process. So. So the compensation review, it's a data-driven analysis of exempt staff compensation, benchmarking Creston's practices against comparable B C municipalities. The review finds that while some positions are compensated, you know, at or above the market benchmarks, the majority of exempt staff roles, particularly in leadership and specialized areas, remain below the sixtieth percentile of the market. Our current employee compensation policy establishes a transparent market-based approach, targeting the sixtieth percentile of comparable municipalities with regular external reviews and annual adjustments based on the B C Consumer Price Index or C P I. So despite this framework, recent inflation and cap increases due to budget constraints have led to compensation lagging behind both market comparators and inflation, which does pose a risk longer term to recruitment, retention, organizational stability. So to address these gaps, the review recommends a phased adjustment plan over three years, align salaries with market benchmarks while balancing fiscal responsibility. The plan is consistent with best practices recommended by the Auditor General for local government. There's a number of reports that the A G L G had done for municipalities on human resources and, you know, part of it included compensation packages or programs, as well as U B C M and the Local Government Management Association. So most exempt staff positions are below the market averages and percentiles, especially in leadership and specialized roles. Creston's compensation, this was the first, there was one typo. I thought I adjusted it before saving it to the council report. So the numbers will be slightly less than the numbers that are in your, in your report and in the motion. But the actual compensation is two hundred and sixteen thousand eight oh seven, so a little bit less than, I think I said two thirty something in the original report, so it's a little bit less. So the compensation is two hundred and sixteen thousand eight oh seven below the sixtieth percentile outlined in our employee compensation policy. This number is lower than the recommended motion, which will be adjusted to reflect the total, which will get to two seventy six eight oh seven for inclusion in the five-year financial plan. The current policy merit increases have not been fully implemented due to budget constraints further widening the gap for high-performing staff. So the last time that we did this, we had identified, you know, the policy gaps, we created the policy. We brought in an implementation plan. But the one thing that never really got fully flushed out was being able to have that contingency amount to be able to move people up if they were at the eighty-five percent mark of a salary range, is being able to move them up to that hundred percent over a period of time. And, and each budget year since then, that hadn't been rectified. So. Just very quickly, just so that we, you know, make sure that we understand who we're talking about in our staffing. So the town employees both exempt, which is referring to as non-unionized staff, and unionized employees, unionized employees' wages are negotiated through a collective bargaining process, determined by the expiry of the collective agreement. Exempt staff are not represented by a body to negotiate a review or enumeration. Reviews and increases are in the discretion of the employer. As of October first, twenty twenty five, Preston has twenty-one exempt staff members performing technical administrative management leadership functions. Our policy, our employee compensation policy establishes that a salary grid will be established using the sixtieth percentile of market surveys. And so when we add to staffing, for example, that's the policy we look at for wage structure. So the purpose of, of the report is to provide counsel that comprehensive review of the exempt staff compensation compared with the recent market survey. This review aims at to ensure the compensation practices are competitive, equitable, and aligned with the council policy, supporting the town's ability to attract and retain qualified individuals in a challenging labor market. The review also seeks to address identified gaps between the current compensation and industry benchmarks and to recommend policy and budgetary actions that will position the town for long-term organizational success. So the last time we had a big policy gap, we adjusted the policy. This time, going through it, and I'll explain a couple of the gaps as we go through. There are some recommendations to adjust the policy or amend the policy to be able to, to be a little better. So just quickly, the previous review done in July twenty twenty-two. It basically found that we were about a hundred and ninety-four thousand short from the industry benchmarks at that time. As well as the review identified that we did not have an updated policy for exempt staff compensation and that existing practices were not fully aligned with council's adopted policy. For example, council's involvement in setting individual staff wages was not consistent with the one employee model that we actually operate under and is the recommended best practice. Council had directed myself to amend the exempt staff compensation policy and review and create regular review periods and pay bounds based upon the market percentiles, which was, was ended up being the policy that was created. As well as a compensation adjustment plan, which identified six exempt positions as being significantly below market compensation. So we developed a plan very specifically to deal, address the six individuals, as well as the other gaps. The proposed plan was done over a three-year period of time, and actually this last budget cycle was the last year of making those adjustments. And so here we are. Now, the policy does say every four years, the council had, at the time, had directed it that they, they wanted that market review and those adjustments be, to be done the year before a municipal election. So that policy very specifically identified twenty twenty-five. So the next, the next policy or next survey review will be done in four years versus the three years that has took place now. So the policy establishes exempt staff salaries be set using a transparent market-based approach. Calls for regular market reviews every four years, third year of the council term, with interim annual adjustments to the, you know, between the market surveys of using B C C P I. I believe the policy says the November to November rate. And that's, and since then, we've upgraded the salary grid each year using them. The salary grid was to be developed, targeting the sixtieth percentile of the market average with a range of eighty-five percent to a hundred and ten percent of that benchmark. So that, that's, that, there's a range for when we had new employees, where they fit in there through three-year long-term high-performing staff. We also created a achievement planning and review process, or A P R P, which to eliminate from the, the previously we had in employment agreements that everybody got a C P I factor capped at two percent. And it didn't matter about performance. So we were trying any increase, including C P I, to at least a minimum level of performance. And as well as the, the policy contemplated merit increases for staff below market with slower increases for those that, that were above the hundred percent. So that we get sort of be able to bring people up. If you hire somebody and you bring them in at that eighty-five percent range, that you could move them up over a period of time to that hundred percent to market. This approach is consistent with the recommended practices by U B C M, Local Government Management Association, the A G L G reports. And, you know, and basically they emphasize the importance of having a clear, regularly reviewed compensation benefits policy for local government employees. And won't, I won't go over this entirely, but this is a comparison when we did, especially with the last policy update. We compared our policy that we had with other municipalities and, and very quickly is our policy fits with what other municipalities are doing, which is very diagonal, is the best practices. So regular market reviews, cost of living adjustments, performance-based increases and council oversight of the policy. So we'll talk very briefly about the municipality converter group. So in the policy, it's up to the C A O to establish the policy converter group. Like the last survey, we targeted the communities between five and fifteen thousand. There's thirty-five municipalities between five and fifteen thousand, and I'll cover a little bit of the reasons why. So first off, the, you know, the, the small populations, you know, municipalities under fifteen thousand residents are represented evenly across all geographical areas of the province. So then you're able to, to get different market conditions, different cost of living conditions, like it's very geographically balanced. Whereas as soon as you get over fifteen thousand, like the fifteen thousand to forty-nine thousand, you end up with mostly South Coast and Vancouver Island. There's a couple in the Okanagan, one in the north, but you start getting a lot smaller geographical representation. And then, you know, and so you get some, some lack of regional representation. So Caribou and Skeena districts have no communities between that fifteen and forty-nine. And then, of course, your large population municipalities are basically reflective of the greater Vancouver area. So why do we stay with the five to fifteen thousand is service similarities, service similarities. Now, for example, these communities are required to pay seventy percent of policing costs, so that, you know, you're, you're in that range. Anything below five thousand, they're not paying for policing, and over fifteen thousand, they're paying for ninety percent police. Other things that changed at the fifteen thousand population mark, you know, and this is more of an empirical thing to look at when, you know, I'm looking at communities, is anything over fifteen thousand, you know, you're more likely to have a larger career fire department, you know, which has, you know, much larger significant staff costing. Everything just gets exponentially larger very fast over that fifteen thousand. And, and for consistency, when we go through some of the data ahead, all of that data was obtained from the province of B C. They, the, on their website, they actually have the data for populations, that's what I used. And then all the tax collection or the tax per capita and all that is all in the province of B C. So that's just a very consistent place for the, to collect. So some of the comparators that we used, so besides the service similarities, the municipal taxes per capita, since annual budgets can vary due to factors like grant service fees, one-time projects, on and on and on, it's hard to compare, you know, budgets to budgets. So what we found was a very consistent way of, of using from the provincial data municipal taxes per capita. Because taxes that are collected are really for your core services, generally speaking. And so that's a really good reference point, regardless of the size of the community, how much are they charging collecting taxes for services per person? You know, that way it eliminates, you know, grants, like when you look at an operational budget, one year it could be fifteen million, the next year it could be twenty-five million, but the difference between the two is a ten million dollar grant. You know, it doesn't really speak to that. So, so that we found that the municipal taxes per capita was a more consistent way to measure across communities. I, I captured this one out of the data because, you know, and it's a conversation often in Creston is that we rely very heavily on residential taxation, so I wanted to take a look at, you know, what, how do we compare it to other municipalities in terms of how much we rely on residential taxation? Then provincial representation, you know, we, we were looking to make sure that we had municipalities from various regions of B C, capturing the differences in cost of living and government practices. So what we ended up with was fifty-four percent for nineteen municipalities in total that informed the data survey. Additional consideration, the survey results were undertaken to determine if there was variances based upon other factors, such as eliminating the communities to say ten thousand and under. When I did that, the numbers went up. It actually increased the, the salary ranges. And I'm not, I'm not entirely sure why. There was some anomalies that you could speak to, but in general, it started to raise the averages. I think that speaks to a little bit about the competition for some of the specialized roles in the smaller communities. So in some of the smaller communities, they were willing to pay more. And that's an empirical guess from the data. And here's the list of the communities that we have data from, the nineteen communities, Creston's. Those in alphabetical order, not by order of population. So with the comparative municipalities, so they range in population from five thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven being Asuas to the largest one being thirteen thousand two fifty-two, which is a city of terrorists. Nineteen municipalities represent fifty-four point three percent of the thirty-five municipalities that we could have had data from. Creston is the third smallest by population. Six municipalities were within ten percent of Creston's population and represent thirty-one point five percent of the surveyed municipalities. So, you know, we are capturing enough municipalities as well on the smaller side. So the other data points that we looked at, just to be able to see if there was really any massive anomalies with the group. You know, Creston has a nine hundred and ninety municipal taxes per capita. So if you took our six million dollars that was collected from property taxes, lots you're divided by the population, that's how you get that number. Ranking the third lowest compared to the other municipalities, it's ranged from seven sixty-one, as high as twenty-two hundred. The average was four thousand four hundred and ninety-six. I used, I brought in the representative house values. This does not have a lot of value in, in necessarily the comparison, but it, it does speak a little bit to, you know, the, the communities themselves, I guess, a little bit. So Creston's average home value was four hundred and thirty-five thousand. It was the fifth lowest out of the, sorry, I should have said nineteen municipalities. Or well, twenty, including us, I guess, ranging from two hundred and eighty-five in the low side to one point one million. The average was six hundred and sixty-eight. Residential property taxes, when we looked at total, and this is total taxes and charges, so this is including your utility billing as well. Creston's residential property tax average was four thousand eight eighty-two, ranking the eighth lowest out of that comparator group. And the range was between four thousand and seventy-one hundred, the average was fifty-two seventy-five, applied to the, the average house or the representative housing each municipality. The residential tax share percentage, seventy-four percent of Creston's total tax revenue comes from residential properties, ranking the sixth highest among the comparative municipalities, the highest was ninety-two percent. The average was sixty, and so there is quite a mixture of ranges. There were certainly, one community, I think, was as low as twenty-three percent, which was Canal. Ninety-two percent was Peachland. And I believe that was all on a chart that I provided in the first appendix, so that it's a receiver that we ranked them all out. So I, I'm not going to go through each one of them like in the report. I just basically wanted to show a chart, which is basically shows our salary to the sixtieth percentile, the gap to the sixtieth percentile, and whether or not that, that falls below eighty-five percent range on the grid as well. Because, you know, that was one of our challenges last time, as well as that we update the grid and then employees aren't even on the grid. So you're, you know, forget that you're not even to the sixtieth, you're not even on the salary grid itself. So on this one here, there was four positions that are literally off the grid itself. And on this one here, this covers protective services and infrastructure services, there were two that were off the grid. And, and then again, this is just taking the raw numbers from the compensation to the sixtieth percentile. So the total estimated cost to reach the sixtieth percentile, as contemplated in the policy, is two hundred and sixteen thousand eight oh seven. Again, I, I found that I think the number is a little higher than the report. There was one, I thought I had corrected it before I posted it, there was one inconsistent dataset that I had to pull out of there. Everything was on the assistant chief's position. To reduce the impact budget, it suggested to phase the adjustments over a two-year period of time. And I say two years, it's going to be a two to three-year period of time. This may not be done evenly by position, so this is not an approach of just, you know, like it's all done equally across the board. Some positions need more attention than others. And, and it's, and partly because of how the pay scale works. The way the pay grid is set up is that eighty-five percent, and this is just kind of a high-level view of it, eighty-five percent range is for people that are brand-new in a position. And your hundred percent is basically your experienced, knowledgeable employees, and your hundred and ten percent are your long-term, high-achieving type employees. And so in there, while we have to adjust, you can't say somebody's new forever, so you can't keep them at eighty-five percent forever. But if they are today, they may not get the increase to a hundred percent immediately because we have other employees that we should be moving up there quicker. So I just wanted to sort of point that out, and that will be within the discretion of my discretion as I put together the compensation plan. But taking the, these numbers as they are is straight across the board. It broke it out to be about a hundred and eight thousand for the first two years and sixty thousand. This is the sort of the worst-case scenario. I do intend to, to be able to take a look at this and adjust it. When I was doing this and absent of having a director of finance to help me correlate all these numbers, you know, for example, I'm taking a pretty high estimate of that, of that contingency we need for merit-based. You know, part of me, I would like to say lower immediately to you right now, but I want to be able to make sure that we, we have something that'll fit and work with our, our longer-term compensation plan. So right now, I would say this is your worst-case scenario, what would show up in the fi, in the five-year financial plan. You know, as I enable to go through it and go person by person, which I'm not going to do in an open meeting or in a, with council, is, you know, some of these may start to lower some of those from this raw data. In other words, is that there's, you know, some people reaching rates of that sixtieth percentile immediately. The estimated tax, I'll, I'll speak to that. So that's based upon twenty twenty-five or one percent generated sixty thousand. That doesn't account for any non-market changes that happen every year. And so as that takes place, that reduces the taxes, like in other words, this new market change, like next twenty twenty-six, one percent might generate sixty-three thousand. So that does change the percentages a little bit. And that's just the estimated tax impact straight across. That's not necessarily what we're proposing in terms of how we're going to fund this. That all becomes part of your budget process and, and, you know, where funding is going to come from. But again, just taking the raw numbers, that's what the, the value of the month. So some considerations for implementation. Again, so, you know, a number of positions are below, especially in leadership and specialized roles. You know, the C A O's compensation is at sole discretion of council. The phased adjustments will help balance market competitiveness and fiscal responsibility. So again, you know, rather than trying to do it overnight, we're going to do that over a period of time. At the end of the day, the C A O is responsible for the recruitment and retention of employees and will work with the individual staff to develop an adjustment plan that achieves the market benchmarks over that three-year period of time. So I'll be meeting with all the affected staff, you know, over the, the next month or so, and that will help inform budget as well and, and as, as I anticipate, will lower the number a little bit. And then, you know, transparent communication and annual reviews are essential for successful implementation. So our staff are well aware of what the market is. I mean, that, that information is available to our staff all times, recipic info. And so it's not like our staff are unaware where they fall from their positions to what the market wages are. So, you know, it's really important for us to be able to be very clear about how we're going to approach that and how we're going to deal with it and how we value them as we move through that process. I just included, and I'm not going to read this, but I just included the other benefits that we do have because, I mean, you know, everything does come at a cost. You know, so I just mentioned the, the benefit package we have, that's in a separate policy. We actually do have a benefits policy. And so that's already been laid out, and that policy is relatively recent, it's only a couple of years old. And we did a fairly comprehensive comparison to communities when we did that, and we were, you know, pretty much similar to most communities. But communities do a lot of different things when it comes to different types of policies. There are benefits, so it's kind of a mixed bag today. It's hard to compare straight across. So the recommendations to council is, first off, is if you approve the revised salary grid based upon the current market benchmarks to maintain competitiveness. So I include that in the report as well, what does the twenty twenty-six salary grid look like. Implement the phased increases over two to three years for all positions below the sixtieth percentile, as identified in the. Implement the phased increases over two to three years for all positions below the sixtieth percentile as identified in the, and contemplated in the employee compensation policy. That we need to provide contingency funds to support the merit increases that's contemplated in that policy as well. Especially for high-performing staff below market benchmarks. And again, when we start to move people up closer to, that reduces the need perhaps for that sixty thousand, that, you know, for that contingency. So that's where I say, I have a feeling that it can be less than, than that. But I wanted to come in here and just say, this is the worst-case scenario. Align the update factor within the policy to match a hundred percent of B C C P I, ensuring compensation keeps pace with inflation. So what we did with the update factor originally was, a few communities were doing it. They were probably providing point or seventy-five percent of C P I. But updating their salary grid with C P I, well, we did the same thing. And what happens then if inflation is three percent, salary grid goes up three percent. We only go up, you know, two point five percent. But, you know, we're not keeping up with that inflationary number. You do that over a four-year period of time and that adds up to, you know, a couple of percentage points. Forget the other market pressures that can be on certain positions. Do, you know, basically provide direction to, you know, for me to clearly explain to staff the rationale for compensation decisions, including budget limits and council's plan to address the gaps over time. Again, I think this is relatively important rather than let staff, you know, formulate their own story in their head. You know, have, you can provide me direction, explore staff retention engagement through professional development, flexible work arrangements and wellness programs. This task be done basically on an individual basis because somebody doesn't have to accept that as a, as a option for pay. In other words, if they felt that they were, you know, their market condition was for that. You know, certainly me offering a rec center pass doesn't necessarily fill that gap. If it does for somebody, great. If it doesn't, it doesn't, but we, we certainly haven't taken a lot of time to board that directly with staff. And so it is an opportunity to sort of see. There is some professional development with some employees that, some employees have expressed the desire to, to have some professional development. And that perhaps is an avenue, again, to, to sort of offset some of that compensation. But, you know, we'll have to sort of, it's a case-by-case basis. By implementing these recommendations, council will strengthen the talent available to attract and retain talent, support service excellence and maintain fiscal responsibility. Ensuring that compensation practices remain fair, competitive and sustainable. And the review and proposed recommendations aim to ensure fair, competitive and sustainable compensation for Preston's exempt staff supporting organization stability and excellence. Questions? I was losing my voice.
Start with counselor.
Thank you. Just a, a few questions and thanks, thanks very much for the work that's here. And I do apologize if I'm not here for the last round of this conversation. So. Let's see, who am I going to start? I'm just curious, like you talked about year one, year two, year three. A plan that's shifting from a three-year review to a four-year review and nothing around. Compensation or salary increases in the year four. So just trying to understand how that looks. And I, I don't think I really understand how back in twenty-two, we identified employees that were below the sixtieth percentile. And changes were made to bring them up. But now we're still looking at employees that are under the sixtieth percentile. So I think. The plan needs to have a shift maybe where we don't keep having employees sitting at that sixtieth percentile. Unless I'm misunderstanding something.
So the last, when we did the, the review and we developed the policy. And I, I want to be very careful of how to explain this in public open meeting. But we, I developed the policy that fit the individual staff. So while the gap between the, the compensation at the time to the sixtieth percentile was a hundred and ninety-one thousand. We did not cover that gap because we had a number of new people in positions. I could, when I worked with individual staff, there was, you know, new people in roles that I could easily say, well, you know, like you're eighty-five percent aren't here. And, you know, keep up the good work and we'll, we'll slowly move you up. But I wasn't able to move them up. And so what we did was we were able to bring some of the staff that were below the salary grid into the salary grid. But we never brought everybody up to the sixtieth percentile. So it wasn't like that hundred and ninety-one thousand that, that I, from the twenty twenty-two survey. That we covered all that ground, got everybody to the sixtieth percentile, oh my God, we're now two hundred. If you were to compare the numbers. You know, what we increased and, and I, by the way, I didn't do the math like this because it, it became irrelevant. But if you looked at how much we, of that hundred and ninety-one thousand that we actually covered, we probably only covered half of that or three quarters of that. And, and so what's happened is between, you know, as we moved them up and got them into that salary grid, we're only paying, we're providing an update factor, seventy-five percent of C P I. We never really got to the sixtieth percentile and the market's been changing. And so you put all those factors in there, that just made that gap a little bit bigger. Moving forward, to answer your question about the fourth year. Ideally, if once, if, and, you know, again, I'm, I'm saying this as a, as the hypothetical perfect world. If I took everybody and put them at the sixtieth percentile tomorrow. And we had the small contingency to make sure that our high-performing staff get the merit increases that they deserve to keep them, you know, ran. Especially, you know, I can see market changing over time anyhow, because, you know, this data, some of this data is available through civic info on an annual basis. We do self-reporting of wages. And so I can sort of start to see market trends. Or if there's a, a reason to, that I need to invest in somebody to make sure, you know, I'm retaining that staff member here. You know, you have that little bit of funding there. You should, the next market survey, in theory, especially if we change that, that C P I, we shouldn't be that far behind. Unless there's a real, you know, maybe one position, there might be a high demand. For example, building inspectors, a level three building inspector is like trying to find a unicorn. They're very high demand, that wage, as time goes on, that wage scale will just keep kind of going up a little bit. You know, so that's sort of a market pressure that's on one position that may not be the same on some other positions. So, but you know, you like, you know, with that, that contingency built into the budget. I'm able to sort of retain those employees and make sure that we're staying to market comparators. So that the next market survey is done, I don't want to come back in four years' time and say, oh, look, we're two hundred and fifty thousand behind. We shouldn't turn that stuff over all of this.
Yeah, supplemental to that. So I just also curious around, you know, you talk about merit-based salary increases. And so I, I'm not sure if we as council are allowed to know just what would constitute a merit-based increase. You know, are you using like a tangible scale that's very objective versus like subjective, you know, the term a unicorn?
Yeah, I have a, I have a, we have a very extensive performance evaluation process. Where it's basically three parties are involved in it. It includes the employee, the supervisor and the director or the C O. There's, so there's three people always involved. It starts out with a self-evaluation by the employee, the manager does the evaluation, the director does the evaluation. It's balanced between the, all those evaluations. And then they set smart goals, so they identify what's a goal over the period of time. Is it achievable? How did you achieve that? And so when you tick off all those things, then you have, and I, I just brought it up. Sort of the pages on, page twenty-six. Yeah, so there's expected, good, excellent and exceptional. And so at the end of that, there's a ranking basically based upon all that criteria. So, so this way, if a, if an employee, you know, puts themselves really super high. And a manager puts them really super low, you know, you're, you're taking some of the bias out of there because the, it's going to get averaged out to the middle. So they're probably going to be expected. You have, and then with, with the director or the, the C O as well doing that performance as well, then you're balancing at a one more level time. Then with the smart goals, they're really, you know, on average, we have four smart goals per review period. They're very measurable. Because they're, they're, you know, I'll use an example, actually I'll use an example, but one of our directors is here. You know, one of his smart goals was to establish service level policies for his department. And so that either gets done or it's not done. And so they're very measurable, they're not, they're not subjective, they're very objective.
And just one last, sorry. I'm just, I'm also curious around the update factor. And you, you talked to a little bit about needing to switch from seventy-five percent of C P I to a hundred percent. But I'm also not understanding how the cost of living allowance COLA. Like why we don't use that versus C P I. I know they're kind of related and I know that some industry looks at COLA, some looks at C P I, so just.
There's a, there's a number of different numbers, you know, like first, you know, first off, you got, so C P I and COLA, I think, are the same thing.
No, sort of.
Little different, okay. Yeah, so the, at the time, and this was the recommendation from Stefan at the time, was that we use the B C C P I November to November numbers. Because that's closest to the budget period, that's close, you know, for him to inform him of that. I'm not going to be able to answer why that was his, you know, hit recommendation to use that versus COLA or, or other data. And, you know, certainly can be something that Jacob and I can review to determine what is the best one to use. But at the end of the day, whatever number we choose to use. Which by the way, I did find some consistency on B C C P I and other municipal policies, so I'm not, but we can, we can review that. As long as there's consistency in whatever the number you're choosing isn't seventy-five percent of. Because whatever number you're using for. That moving up, if you're only getting seventy-five percent of it, then you're not keeping people up to that pace. Because that's the, that's the important, to me, the difference between the two, I'm not sure why that was chosen.
Probably had a hundred questions, Bob.
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep mine very focused. The two exempt employees that are above the, the threshold sixteen. The value of that, that gap, was it offset against the shortfall of the others? Okay, so really they're, they're.
I can't take their page out of the way.
I understand that. Are they red circled until they, the, the, the grid catches up to that? Or are they going to always have that?
Well, the grid contemplates people over, so your grid goes up to a hundred and ten percent. Your merit, your A P R P does contemplate, you know, performance increases for people that are over a hundred percent, you know, for high exceptional performance. So basically you're going to be in the exceptional range. So in other words is that, but that's what you'd want from that employee. You don't expect just a little extra effort, you expect a whole lot of extra effort. And, but there, but for example, in the exceptional range, they're limited to a maximum of two percent of an increase. Whereas if you were at eighty-five percent, you know, and you're in the exceptional range, you'd get up to five percent. And so it is, you know, that does provide a little bit of limiting, but you want them to still have incentive to show up and. Perform at a high, high level. And I, I really do believe all our staff do show up and perform at a high level. But our performance evaluations don't come back and, well, I think everybody's exceptional. I mean, we're, we're, we're pretty conservative in handing out exceptions.
Okay, so short answer is that it wasn't offset against the other way, so.
Need more questions? Okay, I have a couple myself. So first of all, one of the biggest factors that in this, that it's hard to draw a comparison on, is the difference in house, housing costs. When you go from Creston to the average house cost in British Columbia, which is over two hundred and thirty thousand dollars higher than Creston. And then you have places like View Royal, which is over, close to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher than Creston. And you're trying to classify everybody in a similar wage. And you know, the cost of housing, we save thousands of dollars a month on mortgage payments. So when you draw that comparison, there's an advantage to living in Creston that should, should be measured in dollars somehow. Because there is, in fair compensation, if one of our employees decided that, oh, I'm going to move to View Royal tomorrow. Because they have a job that pays the same and the title's the same. It would cost them so much money in wages that they would have spent on housing, would not make it feasible.
Assuming they don't have equity.
Assuming they don't have equity, correct. So I find it a little difficult to draw comparisons between the different jobs in different communities for that reason. Secondly, every one of these jobs has a job title. But we don't know if the job description is the same, because in some of those jobs, when you look across positions, some, some communities have filled four positions. Some communities have filled two or three positions in across that range. So we, again, we don't know if those employees are doing comparable work for comparable wage, because we don't, we're, we're comparing job titles, but not job descriptions. So it's hard for me to draw what I would call a fair comparison across those communities to come up with a decision. And thirdly, when you look at recruitment and retention. We have not perceived it to be a problem here. And probably one of the reasons is our reasonable cost of housing here and how much money that could potentially save somebody. So I have some difficulty with establishing a wage exactly by doing this comparison without considering those factors or putting any weight on them. Because I see no weight on those comparisons. And when you look at the fact that seventy-four percent of our ratepayers are residential. And of, of those, we have a high percentage of them are elderly and a fixed income. I, I have a hard time justifying this to people that are asking me, why are we paying them at these wages? And I'm not saying they don't deserve it. I'm just saying in a comparison, I, I just don't have the correct weighting factors for me to say as a mayor, yep, this is the correct way to do it. And I don't know how to fix that, and I don't know how you can answer that. But we're the ones that have to justify these wage increases and explain why we're doing what we're doing. And again, I believe in fair compensation, but I, I don't know if you consider any weighting to this. Whether this is actually the best plan for our, our town and our employees. And so I, I, I do have to state that because it concerns me very much.
No, it's a fair, fair statement. Through, through the survey, in the last survey we did and this one as well, as we did job matching. They, they generally come back and it's hard to put weighting on that because. Somebody ticking off that they think that their job description matches ours is, is pretty subjective. And, and so I didn't go into a great detail because there is one job that was matched that I didn't, you know, that I, from a C O perspective, I didn't feel was a good match. But, you know, so that's a very hard subjective thing to do. And, and so really, the idea of this was to take some of that subjectivity out and be as broad as we possibly can. In terms of, you know, that comparison. Again, I even looked at when you start pulling data out, going to smaller communities. You know, it's, it's, it's what the market is. You know, fair, fair comment for the cost of living in places. You know, there's, there's certainly, you know, for somebody that's young, starting out, that's a, certainly a fair statement to say that. You know, the cost of living would be higher with somebody with equity, that may not be the same conversation. You know, so I wouldn't want to, I'm, I'm not trying to second guess what our employees think or how they, they perceive things. But, you know, I certainly have had conversations with staff, like this is not, you know, some of our staff know what the market is. And, you know, and they're. You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to discount nor would I want to say that they wouldn't, you know, in View Royal, maybe that's a good example of where they wouldn't go. But, you know. There's other, many other communities in there that they would. So I'm not, I'm not sure how that sort of plays in people's perceptions or, or their desire.
Counselor, I throw out his hand, he's first.
Yeah, I just wanted to, after that I, I have the same questions as the mayor and same concerns. And that I have to drop out of the meeting to go coach volleyball right now. So I'll let y'all take it from here.
Okay, thanks.
How lucky.
Counselor Holm.
The one thing that I noticed in this list of communities. You know, they said there was only nineteen communities that had their pay schedule available. But communities that are near to our population, there's only about a third of them. I don't know if increasing that at all would have a bit more of a public. Understanding.
But we, we sent the survey out to all three, five municipalities. Those are the responses and some of them were validated with civic info to be of that software. Right, which we saw.
Oh, I mean, I, I, I feel like some of them, and I did a quick, just a look. And Smithers, for example, is very close to our population. Their Sophie report does list all of their positions with the wages.
Sort of, I made this, so it was trouble. The jobs, sort of, I made this, so it was trouble with the statement of financial information, for example. Um, if you look at my salary, for example, in the last two years, it shows higher on the statement of financial, because I pulled vacation time. And so you don't get accurate, that would be an inaccurate way of getting data, that would actually probably push the survey value up.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
And so the issue is, um, are we prepared to make this motion today? Do we wanna defer for another meeting? Do we want more information? Because, um, again, I do have some genuine concerns here, and, um, we are getting to budget time. Where we are already tying up, um, part of our budget with this, which is, again, it's fair to do, but are we ready to do that? And that's my question. I could ask for a mover in a second, or if we get it, um, we can then discuss the actual motion. So I will, I will do that, I'll read the motion out. The motion is that the report titled Employee Compensation Review twenty twenty five dated October fourteen, twenty twenty five. From the C A O will be received. Then council approves the inclusion of, it's actually two sixteen eight oh seven, correct? That's the revised number, is that a?
Three ninety one, eight seventy six. Pardon? Two seventy six.
Okay, two seventy six?
Eight oh six.
Okay. Um, not including CPI adjustments in the five-year financial plan to provide for three-year phased implementation. Of exempt staff compensation adjustments, including the establishment of contingency. For merit-based compensation increases to be deliberated during the twenty twenty six budget process. The council directs its chief administrative officer to amend H U N zero zero one dash. Zero zero nine employee compensation policy to include an updated salary grid. Based on market benchmarks and aligning the update factor to match B C C P I for deliberation at an upcoming meeting of council. That council directs the chief administrative officer to engage exempt staff on considering non-monetary recognition. To assist reducing future compensation increases. And further, the council directs this chief administrative officer to communicate the upcoming policy amendments and budget constraints to exempt staff. We have a mover. Move by councillor Dumas, second by councillor Baldwin, discussion on the motion. Councillor.
Um, I think for myself, I'm a, a bit concerned about moving forward with the existing motion the way it is. Um, I personally feel. That there is value in getting our employees all to that twenty, our sixtieth percentile grid. Recognizing, sure, that some employees have been moved up from other roles. Um, and so their salary maybe didn't quite increase as much as to the new role. But I, I, I'm just concerned that, you know, we're potentially looking at sitting in twenty twenty nine. If the will says that we're all sitting at this table, um, looking at another chunk. Of employees sitting at the sixtieth percentile that need to be moved up. And so seeing a plan that just gets, that starts there, and then has. Regular salary, salary increases yearly, along with merit-based increases. Which can, you know, keeps our employees, um, meeting or exceeding expectations. Um, seems like a better, um, way to, to manage this from a tax purpose, it's more stable. I don't feel like this is stable. Um, but, but I also feel like it's really important that we get our employees to that sixtieth percentile. So I think this initial increase is really important to do, but we need to have a plan that doesn't. Keep seeing us dropping and having to do these big chunks of money to get our employees up there really quickly. Over and over. Um.
Councillors.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if this is something that can be done, um, closer to budget time, when we are looking at our next. Like, whose expenses, and so then when we look at that one point eight percent tax increase, we can compare it with the other. Things that are happening, that will also be, like, we don't know quite a few other things that will be coming, like R C P, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I'm just wondering, when we have all the information at the table, we're already close to that.
Councillor Dumas.
Yeah, I, I agree with councillor Arias, in, in this motion, it's saying this will come back to us for budget. And so then we can look at our full budget at that time, and it also is saying it's gonna come back to us for, um. Deliberation in an upcoming council meeting, and so I'm happy to, to continue on with, as, as read. With, um, staff hearing the concerns and, and bring, bring some more information to, to help us out into deliberating. This, this forward.
Councillor Baldwin.
Um, I, I think the thing for me that jumped out was that it, it, it wraps everything into a, a, a large number. That is daunting, but if we were able to try to figure out, um, either on a median or an average, what this actually means on a per employee. I mean, if it's next year, every employee on average is gonna get five thousand dollars more. And the year after that, they're gonna get five thousand dollars more. That is actually a chunk that we can wrap our heads around. But I can't, I, you, you know, when you're looking at two hundred and seventy-some odd thousand dollars over the three-year pe- period, if that's gonna go up. You don't know whether or not that's realistic, reasonable, on a personal level, on an employee level basis. Uh, but I mean, if it was, it's gonna go up five thousand next year, five thousand a year after that, and a couple of thousand dollars per employee after that. Um, it's more defensible. But right now, the people in, in, who live in town, who are making, you know, twenty dollars an hour. Are looking at, holy crow, this is a whole lot of money, it's a quarter of a million dollars over the next three years that it's gonna go up by. That seems like a lot, though. And, and also the impact on taxes, so if, if we see this again, perhaps that context would be a little bit more palatable. Uh, it might be easier to understand, because right now, if we're just saying it's gonna go up by a quarter of a million dollars over three years, that's. It, it's, it, it, it seems a little bit out of touch, a little, little tone deaf. Or the current market, where we're talking recession, it's not the other stuffs.
Mine, uh, I don't wanna be involved in your debate, but I, I gotta be really clear here. That was just the worst-case scenario if you gapped everybody up. It's the simplest, I'd be months to talk to people to figure out what the actual cost is, so I appreciate. You know, that concern is, is it's not gonna be, everybody's gapped up to that sixtieth percent. I've, I've got every individual employee has their own circumstance, so it, it'll be less than that number. It's just, it's really, when I put this together, and because we're headed to the budget, I need that direction that. I can put that together, because I still don't wanna show up, even if it, it'd have three quarters of that number, it's still gonna be a surprise and a shock to everybody, so. This is the sticker shock there, that's all.
But we did have sticker shock in twenty twenty two as well, did we not? Was there not a big gap number?
There was a big gap number, but again, we didn't actually fill that gap. So if I went back and showed you exactly what that gap, we probably didn't even cover half of that.
Sure.
Right, because the individuals that were involved, you know, there was reason to keep them at certain wage scales versus going currently to the sixty percent. Where it fell apart and, and it grew more was just quite simply, um, not having that ability to move people up as they gained experience. So if somebody's brand new in that eighty-fifth percentile, uh, or that eighty, that eighty-five percent range. And we have no money to give them a merit increase, and we're only giving them seventy-five percent of CPI. They're falling that much farther behind as the market keeps going.
Sure, sure.
So, um, so, so I, I wanted you just to be very clear, we did not gap up a hundred and ninety-one thousand last time, not even close. Um, and I don't suspect that we'd be gapping that whole entire number. Uh, and so, for example, that sixty thousand number for building contingency, like I said. A doubt would be based taking the entire payroll and giving everybody a three percent raise, probably not very realistic. Right, so, but again, but I needed to present something to be able to put context to where we're at.
But I do think our employees expect a bit of an increase rate, uh, in salary each year.
Well, they're eligible for the update factor, which is, is the CPI with the folder.
Seventy-five percent of it.
Seventy-five percent, it's, it's the merit increases, so if you're at eighty-five percent, and you're a new employee in that, that position. Um, only getting the update factor will never move you closer to the hundred percent. Right, and that's the bu- that's the budget piece we get budget for to be able to keep.
Right, so that's your safeguard.
So I could call the question on this, or we could ask for an amendment to the motion prior to calling the question. How correct is call question? I'll call the question, all in favor. On, yeah, three, four, that motion is carried.
Bring it back.
The members are moving to View Royal, it sounds like.
No.
I think it may, um, have some influence on our budget deliberations when we set you a whole number, and I think we may have to decide not to do. But I, I am in favor of our employees being fairly compensated.
Yeah.
And there's certainly the methodology here.
Yes.
That's no question.
Who finds tuning?
And our new CFO is gonna tell us how much money and we have anyhow.
I'm sorry.
How much you got?
He doesn't know yet, he's got here. So let's move on to financing, request for decision from the C A O regarding the third reading and adoption of permissive tax exemption bylaw.
So I think, well, this is just for the, um, reports, literally just for the adoption, um, third reading and adoption of the permissive tax exemption. So you had this, uh, to a previous meeting, you did two readings of it, there've been no changes to the bylaw, and it's just presented. We need to consider that third reading and adoption.
Yep, councillor Holland.
Can I just ask a quick question? Um, it talks about you qualify for up to ten years. Are, are we at any of these, um, listed, um. Entities that are tax exempt, that are hitting their ten years, and what happens to them, and then they hit ten years?
Um, s- sorry, to answer your question is, is that the legislation allows you to provide a tax exemption for a maximum of ten years in one bylaw.
One bylaw.
Yeah, so you can, you can forever, you can, you know, but you, you can't do any more. You can't do a single decision on kind of exemption that exceeds ten years. Uh, we do a three-year bylaw, so it's every three years.
Okay, okay.
But we don't track how long a person's.
They don't timeout in ten years, they can continue to.
Only one, you can only have a bylaw for a period of time.
Good question.
Okay.
Motion is that the report titled Permissive Tax Exemption Bylaw number two zero four, two zero four two, twenty twenty five. Dated October fourteen, twenty twenty five from the C A O will be received, and further, that permissive tax exemption bylaw. Two zero four two, twenty twenty five be considered for third reading and adoption at the October fourteenth regular council meeting. Motion, councillor Dumas, second councillor Holland. Question, all in favor, that motion is carried. And then do the third reading to the permissive tax exemption bylaw even a third time. Motion two, councillor Baldwin, second councillor, all in favor, motion is carried. And, um, motion to adopt. Permissive tax exemption bylaw number two zero four two, motion two, councillor Arias, second councillor, Baldwin, all in favor. Motion is carried. We'll move on to community services, request for a decision from the director of community services. Regarding building application service level policies, should be building permit, or building application.
Uh, applications, right? For building permits. Uh, we, we managed it with the development application, um, policy, which. To not confuse it with development permit applications, because they're only different things. Or some very infirmits, as it may be, um. So, yeah, what we have here is, uh, in order to, um, for a number of reasons why we need service level policies. Um, essentially to define our processing timelines for building permit applications, as well as to. Set a level of, uh, you know, a little more as a, we're gonna respond to you within this period of time as far as inspections go. Uh, the manager of building and bylaw and I worked through a, a service level policy, uh, which essentially gives twenty days. Business days to, uh, get a building permit, it's like the Logan.
Hmm.
And the three days for the building inspections, the community back these coming up. Um, yeah, if you, if you recall the one that I brought forward last year for, um, development. Uh, it's, it's a very close era of that, uh, just with that building, and so our. Recommendation is to adopt it.
Councillor.
I have a quick question, um, so, like, there can be reasons why there's delays. Um, and often that's because the application isn't clearly enough completed, so do we, um. Is there a strategy for people submitting applications to make sure they're fully submitting all the information? So that they're not perceiving that there are great big delays in getting their application approved, and.
Yes, uh, so, I mean, and that's part of, right, right now we are working on our, updating our building bylaw, for example, so. Um, yeah, and having it very clearly outlined then what's expected is, is certainly helps with that. Um, there's times that we might think that an application has everything it needs to, and we don't find until we. You know, really get into it, that, oh, it's missing this piece or that piece, so there, there are always going to be surprises. Um, in looking through any of the permits that we work with. So, um, but I think it's just the communication piece and making sure that our, our building bylaws and policies are clear. Um, now the twenty days certainly builds in a buffer of what it normally takes. Uh, I don't know, I, if, if it's, if it's busy, you might get up to that level. But if it's, uh, you know, standard, you might be at a couple of weeks. Um, and if there's really nothing else going on, you know, you might have your building permit in a week. So it's, it's really the high-end level, and so if we start slipping below that, you know, then that's when we start having conversations. You know, with, with both the staff, and, and, you know, it continues with council, right, so. And, you know, look at those service levels, is this on the benchmark compared to?
Hey, I guess I can read the motion, and, and the report titled Policy S C R dash zero zero five dash zero zero two. Building application service level dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty five from the director of community service will be received. And further, that council adopts that same, uh, noted policy. Councillor Holland, second councillor Arias, discussion, all in favor, motion is carried. And actually, we have a request for decision regarding official community plan amendment by law.
Won't spend too much time getting into this one, uh, you were, it was last meeting on the one to four. Um, when you would look at it in detail. Um, but essentially, Bill forty-four, the provincial housing statutes, um, December thirty-first is our deadline for O C P. Visual community plan changes to, um, you know, meet the targets that they set out and meet the, um. Our housing goals is, as in our housing news report. Um, you know, the good news, which was communicated to you for, is that we're, you know, well. Um, situated as far as available land that is selling for housing, um, in our residential areas, it's, it's. Um, three or four times higher than what we actually are required to have by the province. So really, the O C P amendment's focused around, um, just enabling that, that atmosphere, or that, um. Providing enabling policies to, for the community to proceed in that direction. Uh, so we had the dwelling unit projections that were included, our map, uh, designations and utilities, and, um. Yeah, new policy specifically around portable rental, special needs and senior housing, housing near transportation and homelessness. And now the production. Um, yeah, that is, uh, our, our first and second readings, and, uh, that is. It'll have to go to a public hearing, so that'll come next.
No questions? I, I know we're gonna ask something on this, and it's, um, those are policies that are aggressive following, we have a list there, including, um. Homelessness and risk of homelessness, and, uh, all it says is that we can, we develop policies, it doesn't say, what, if someone says, what are your policies? We could say, well, the bylaw enables us to develop those policies, that's basically correct, that's what it said.
Uh, our, our policy on the variety of the, the, the social housing side of things is to encourage nonprofit development of these things. As opposed to, um, doing their own system. It came up with the coffee talk as well, that whole issue of, the language in there is not precise. It's intentionally that way with, with community plans, uh, because you don't want to look at yourself to a specific direction. You wanna maintain as, as, as an organization, the ability to be flexible with your timing and execution of policies. Um, which is, you know, why, for example, you, you do all this work on that, these designations. Uh, and then you still have the zoning bylaw that, that goes into greater detail, so it's a overarching framework, and then. You know, find the best fit with the O C P throughout the policies and bylaws, so. you know, find the best fit with the O C P throughout the policies and bylaws, so.
Here, the motion is that council receives the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five request for decision titled O C P Amendment Bylaw Number Two Zero Four One Twenty Twenty Five, first and second readings from the Director of Community Services. And further, that official community plan amendment bylaw number Two Zero Four One Twenty Twenty Five, you read, first time by title, second time by content. Motion two, Counselor Gumus, second Counselor Baldwin, discussion, all in favor? That motion is carried. Move on then to request for, um, event booking sponsorship for Halloween music event.
So, uh, uh, this is similar to the party in the park that we had earlier in the spring here. Same gentleman, and he's asking for council sponsorship in the amount of one hundred dollars, voltage required booking fees. Um, he's hosting a Halloween music event on Halloween night. Five to nine and, uh, free admission and, and all that. They do all the cleanup and everything afterwards, so. Um, yeah, our recommendation is to go for it, but I don't know what's in your sponsorship or advertising budget?
That's about seven hundred dollars in the advertising budget.
Getting to year end.
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion is that council receives this report entitled Open Event Party Booking Sponsorship Request for Information. And further, that council authorizes sponsorship of the Halloween party in the amount of one hundred dollars to be allocated from the council advertising budget. You move to Counselor Baldwin, second by Counselor Holland, discussion, all in favor? Motion is carried, and that wasn't clear there, if we had the ability just to waive the hundred dollar fee or if we're actually paying the hundred dollar fee.
You do not have the ability to waive it.
Alright, thanks. Next.
Sorry, technically, why not?
Because it's in your fees and charges by law that it's, that it costs this much, it doesn't list, um, different things in here. Certain senses where you might waive it. You can include specific things as exceptions in your fees and charges by law.
That would be a hard thing to release, don't it?
Yes.
Yeah, it's tricky.
Yeah.
But it could, it could be done, you could have more exceptions in there than you do right now.
It costs less just to donate a hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Stop crying and everything else.
Anyway, that is request for decision from the Director of Community Services regarding O C P and zoning amendment bylaws to develop various permits of sixteen twenty Hood Road.
Uh, sixteen twenty Hood Road, this is the spawn and, and, um, and the, um, it's, it's the everything property. Um, so this is, this is presenting the, uh, the bylaw package for this is final approval. Um, the official community plan bylaw and zoning bylaws are first option at this point, using the both number of times. And, um, building variance permit referencing the, the covenant, which is now registered on title. Um, yeah, so I think the, the important thing here is that this development permit or the variance permit, buries the works and services bylaw to allow for a fire flow for the commercial development from hundred and fifty liters a second, as it is now, to eighty-two liters per second, um, as is achievable with the system. And the covenant limits the development to what's appropriate with those fire flows.
Yeah, we've been through this one for quite some time.
Yeah.
I think we're familiar enough now to, to make the next, take the next step here and that's that the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five report titled sixteen twenty Hood Road, bylaws adoption and D V P approval from the Director of Community Services will be received. And further, that official community plan amendment bylaw number Two Zero Three Seven Twenty Twenty Five be adopted. Motion two by Counselor Hutton, second Counselor Holland, discussion, all those in favor? Motion is carried. And next is zoning amendment bylaw number Two Zero Three Eight Twenty Twenty Five for adoption. Which is not the same bylaws, it's a city different. Well, this one up.
This is a different bylaw from when we were just looking.
Yep, we didn't know what it was, so no, no.
No information with it.
That was the one that I questioned.
It's just.
Give us a little hint as to what this is.
You just go, no, no. I can, and I can tell you exactly.
Gotta be near.
Yes.
It's one off of the last.
You don't have anything. Um, so the amendments are to schedule A being zoning map, um, to rezone the property sixteen twenty Hood Road from residential area to commercial, um, with, in, at its, um, to commercial neighborhood zone. And to amend the principal uses of that zone to include indoor recreation and retail specific to the property located at sixteen twenty Hood Road. Located at legal description.
Now we don't know what her, actually, motions are going to be. So the motion that zoning amendment bylaw number Two Zero Three Eight Twenty Twenty Five be adopted, motion by Counselor Hutton, second and by Counselor Gumus. John. All in favor? That motion, that bylaw is adopted and do this again. And is this one also associated with that?
Yeah, this one, I, I think I defer it. The next one is, is, is. I mean, the Director of Community Services regarding. Oh, the developments. Getting, I'm getting. The next one is indeed, and is that one not in there either?
No.
The neutral version.
Yeah, because it just does weird, be approved.
But it is. We should know that by the number.
It is listed in the original motion of the first document, yes, which is number.
Yes, I think it's variance permit.
There's no, there's no additional, your worship, you just need to, uh, those are your separate motions.
Yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll make the motion that development variance permit number twenty-five dash zero two be approved because it has been, it has had previous reading.
Understand what happened now.
Yeah.
Down for all.
Then I see, okay.
Is they adopted and approved?
It's breaking. These are, this is also the Hood Road.
Well, did it leave the zoning bylaw?
You had it attached to your report, zoning bylaw, yeah.
Yeah, they're all attached.
To the.
They need a motion for the zoning amendment by law.
He's already done that.
Yeah, yeah. So it's just. Second. Counselor Holland, second by Counselor Hutton, all in favor? The motion is carried, so now that should put the bed Hood Road.
Hood Road.
And again, development variance permit, do we do that?
Just in that.
We said did that.
You're done?
He's new. Thought you said zone.
Are you saying, thought you said runway?
Is the one who wants to request for decision regarding the Preston Valley Airport runway extension, that's from the Director of Community Services as well, I believe.
No.
No?
Pass the, pass the baton.
Pass it, baton, it's already. Just where it falls in a general. So I'll try to keep it really, really brief, it's hopefully not as complicated as the report probably needs to sound, but. Um, so long and short of it is, is that, um, we did the airport master, um, identified in there was the need to extend the runway. Um, you know, and, and that was in the ten-year horizon, well, within the next ten years. Um, one of the things though is that the contractor for Carson or the contractor for B C E H S is upgrading their planes, and they're upgrading to a larger plane that kind of a landowner existed from. So while we don't know the timeframe that that will entirely take place, I'm gonna assume that's gonna take place over the next year or two or three. Um, but you don't wanna wait until they replace all their planes and they just don't landing, so. Um, what we wanna be, because there's a limited amount of grant funding available for small airports. In fact, the only thing that we have that we can apply for annually is the B C Air Access Program. It opens every November to December. Um, so what we wanna be able to do is, is get that in for grants consideration as a shovel-ready project. To do that, we need to get engineering, um, engineering and costing done. Um, we don't have time between now to get that done, to, to seek the approval from the regional district or work out. I, I, I still have to, you know, get an agreement with the regional district for the service and funding and asset management, like a whole big piece that has to be done. Um, but not to delay this, what we're suggesting is, is that we just guarantee that we're gonna fund the forty thousand dollars, it's our asset. I will work at trying to get the money cost recovered from the shared service. Um, there is also an opportunity to, uh, apply for a grant through the community-directed funds, which, you know, we can get some of the money back through regional district power. Um, but just on the short period of time that we have, we need to get H M Arrow working on that engineering as soon as possible, so. Um, so really the report is, is really the simplicity of it is, we just need council to approve the forty thousand, yes, there's a risk we may not get that money back, uh, we can capture that within our capital and, and operating budget this year. Be, uh, under budget, uh, for some of the savings of that through the year, so that forty thousand, you know, if we didn't recover it, it's not like we're gonna be over budget or something.
Yeah. But we won't be able to access the air access fund, that what you're saying?
No, we need to be able to apply for it. First week of, like, it opens first week of November, closes mid-December.
Right.
We need this engineering and.
Well, okay, I, I, I thought I missed something in terms of.
Yeah, we, we need this to apply for the.
Perfect, that's it.
Yeah.
Better chance.
I didn't get a second. Can I read the motion then, the report titled Funding, Engineering Costs of Runway Extension, dated October fourteen, twenty twenty five, from the C A O will be received, that council authorize the staff to engage H M Arrow Incorporated to provide preliminary engineering design and cost estimating services for the extension runway fifteen dash thirty-three and preparation of turning bays at the runway, at runway fifteen and thirty-three thresholds for the estimated cost of forty thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And further, that council direct staff to request cost recovery from the Regional District of Central Cutney Service Two Forty Airport Preston in areas B and C and area A for the preliminary engineering design and cost estimating services. Motion two, Counselor Holland, second Counselor Baldwin, discussion, all in favor? Motion is carried. And if we don't do it, there are things that state in the future, and of course, could be our annual, so. Certainly support that motion. Detective Services Request for Decision Regarding U B C M Community Emergency Preparedness Fund, E S S Equipment Training Grant Funding.
Yeah, so we are in a partnership with the regional district, uh, for E S S, which is emergency support services. So they provide services to individuals that may have experienced a disaster, it could be a house fire, so they're displaced, it could be a flood, it could be a, a number of things, and so, um, this program is, is volunteer-based and, uh, but does require some, you know, admit work and some leadership and some management to it. And so the regional district is just asking for our support, you know, applying for a grant, uh, to be able to, uh, you know, hire a part-time coordinator, uh, you know, and just engage more in the communities, uh, with recruitment and retention and just to make the program more robust across the region.
Well, that's it. Any questions? Hearing none, I will read the motion that council approves, Regional District of Central Cutney to apply for receiving mandates to U B C and Community Emergency Preparedness Fund, E S S Equipment Training Grant Funding on behalf of town request. Motion two, Counselor Aries, second Counselor Gumus, discussion, all in favor? Motion is carried. And we'll go through recommendations to the committee in the hall. Um, the recommendation number one and two to the regular committee of the hall, held on September sixteen, twenty twenty five, be adopted as follows. Number one, that council receives the September sixteen, twenty twenty five council direction request titled O C P and zoning amendments, virtual legislative requirements from the Director of Community Services for information. The council direct staff to proceed with public consultation and referrals as outlined in the report dated September sixteen, twenty twenty five from the Director of Community Services. And further, that council direct staff to present an official community plan amendment by law intending to address requirements of the provincial government as outlined in this report at an upcoming council meeting. Recommendation number two, the council receives the September sixteen, twenty twenty five council direction request titled Green Municipal Fund Local Leadership for Climate Adaptation, Climate Ready Plans and Process Grant Application for Information. And further, that council direct staff to present a grant resolution for application to the twenty twenty six Green Municipal Fund Local Leadership for Climate Adaptation, Climate Ready Plans and Processes Grant for consideration in an upcoming council meeting. And the motion is made by, everybody still awake?
Yes.
For Gumus, second Counselor Hutton, discussion, all in favor? Motion is carried. We have a little correspondence and we have a, first of all, we have a letter from Kathy Peters regarding child sex trafficking in British Columbia. Motion is that correspondence from Kathy Peters be received regarding child sex trafficking in British Columbia and further that, we wish to do further to that, so, um, I, I think there was a letter attached, um, urging action by the government, I, I believe that's correct, I remember that on that long agenda. But the further is that we would support, um, her request, I suppose.
We need to have the. Please write to the premier and ask the government to reverse the harmful policy that fully decriminalizes hard drugs, that's number one.
That's one of the asks, yeah.
So the three asks, like.
And it.
Would you like that to be part of the movement?
And remove, remove phones from all schools?
No.
Educate about the federal protection of communities and exploited persons act.
I don't have enough information to.
Yeah, I think it's kind of.
Want to receive it for, as, receive it as correspondence then? If you live there.
I think so, maybe we can, um, maybe our, uh, the sexual crimes working group maybe wants to review this letter and see if there's anything they want to action, so.
Yes, forward it to them.
Want to defer it to them for, to bring it back at an upcoming council meeting?
And there'd be working.
Maybe talking to.
These that are asking for this to move in the limitation.
Or, or involve our, our C N P gang, because that's, that's who they're talking about, they're saying that they got it doesn't already.
So we receive it for information and deferred to the R C N P for, um,
Clarification.
Clarification and return it to an upcoming council meeting?
Yeah.
At the bill?
Yeah, it does. Okay, but we're not really qualified to make any kind of these asks, so.
It, you made the motion, do I have a second or? I think I'm. And for the council, all in favor? Hard to make decisions at midnight, isn't it?
But the hockey game's over.
It is, for sure, follow the score, it's, we'll figure it out. So it's Rotary Club Preston Valley regarding permission and support for the construction of a trail from Shakurski Park, Sixteenth Avenue, Devon Street, the correspondence from the Rotary Club, um, be received and that. Yeah, and are they asking for a letter of support?
Uh, they want to build, yeah. Go ahead for it.
Permission from the town, please.
Want us to approve them doing it so they seek grants?
And a letter of support, yeah.
Yeah.
And will he receive it for information and refer the staff?
Thank you.
That's what we need, I agree.
My second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Baldwin, all in favor? Motion is carried. And the next motion is, uh, that correspondence from the Preston Valley Cycling Association requesting a letter of support for a proposed window mountain bike trail network be received and further, that the mayor is authorized to write a letter supportive Preston Valley Cycling Association proposal to develop a window mountain bike trail network. Motion two. All in second, Counselor Holland, discussion, all in favor? Motion is carried, so we'll do a letter of support for that. Um, Cutney Employment Services, uh, next is that correspondence from Cutney Employment Services requesting council proclaim October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month be received and further, that the mayor is authorized to proclaim October to be National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Awareness Month in Preston with the Town Hall building being lit up in purple and blue colors on October sixteen, it's coming up very quickly.
Any questions?
Are the lights set up? It's two days, we didn't set the light, the blue light up for the month of September at this.
Oh, did you?
Did you, I came by many times, I didn't see it, so it did happen, okay. All nights I came by.
Yeah, it was there.
So it will be set up?
Yeah, um, or you also like to make the motion?
Yes, I think you do, that's.
Second, Counselor Holland, discussion?
Oh, just one thing, can we have numerous things in a month?
Good question, good one.
Yeah, there's a lot, because I think the next is also. Is also October.
Yep. We can put one thing in a month.
Okay, great.
Yep.
We're gonna change the color of the light.
All in favor of the motion?
The ministry is asking for colors.
Next is that correspondence from the Ministry of Children and Family Development requesting a proclamation for Foster Family Month be received. And further that the mayor is authorized to proclaim the month of October to be Foster Family Month in Creston. And there's no lights involved in this one. Second councillor Aries, all in favor? Motion is carried. There you do a color job.
Yeah. Yes.
There's only five motions to go. Preston New Horizon Senior Society regarding support of the Royal Crest Building, the correspondence. Um requesting support in maintaining the Royal Crest Hall as a community facility be received. And then they're asking for and further that, but I think um rather than and further. Um it's been referred back to R D C K, so I think we will.
Right, right.
Defer this back to R D C K if that's okay.
Yes.
Thanks. Our motion is we receive it and defer it to R D C K if that's.
Yes.
Would you like us to forward the letter to them?
Pardon?
Would you like us to forward the letter to them?
I I believe they have it, but sure, why not? There you go. This forward the. Sure, I I'm sure they have it, but wouldn't hurt if we forwarded.
Yeah.
From council. But let's have a motion here first of all. Councillor Baldwin, second councillor Holland, all in favor? Motion is carried. Next, the on ends regarding street lighting and sidewalk along First Avenue Northwest and the correspondence from the on ends. Regarding consideration of additional street lighting and sidewalk along First Avenue Northwest Creston be received and further that. It be deferred to staff for further information. Yep.
Okay.
Councillor Baldwin, second councillor Hutton, all in favor? Should just carry. Next is that correspondence from Ducks Unlimited Canada requesting a donation to their annual fundraising banquet be received. And further that council approved the donation of one town of Creston Duffel Bay, one hat, three golf shirts to Ducks Unlimited Canada. To assist with fundraising for their annual banquet. Motion two, councillor Dewis, second councillor Aries, all in favor? Motion carried. And again, that's limited time. I think it was just Friday, isn't it? It was probably eighteen ninety. And next is Creston Valley Dance Society, that discretionary grant application from. Preston Valley Dance Society you receive. They're asking for fifteen hundred dollars, so I'm asking here the mover to suggest that amount. We only have what, six hundred dollars, five hundred?
Fifteen, really about fifteen hundred dollars in the discretionary fund.
Okay.
It's fifteen sixty.
That's what's.
How to do this?
I wouldn't say five hundred. How do we else deal with that? Because we still have this. Probably gonna have an ass from the volleyball this year. And how like, when's the cutoff again? And the year?
September.
December?
Right. I think it's chen. The the argument, they they dominated our coffee top table. Um but the 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 point was that they have expenses ten times of that. Of fifteen hundred dollars. So in other words, they're they're on they're on fumes with no other places and it's feeding people and stuff like that. I think it's as compared to something relatively cosmetic. I think I would be going. I would be going to fifteen hundred and I don't think I'm. Well, I think as to what the town would want, if we can't resolve anything else uh in that time, this is more than a token amount. Um purely politics. I would, I would. Yours, yours would be five hundred, so that's that's the motion you're making. So if somebody seconds that, then I'll. I'll I'll defer until we vote on that first.
Run in between thousand.
Hmm.
Seven fifty.
Yeah.
We have no motion yet.
And mostly that being second.
Conversation.
Yeah.
You can reword your motion if you'd like. And honestly, I support fifteen hundred because they are going to run out of money and they provide very valuable services in our community. And if we're going to stretch anything, I would recommend we stretch this one.
What does that leave us with?
Awesome.
No, nothing.
Nothing. Eight dollars, eight dollars.
Until the summer thirty-first.
I do make a motion that we do five hundred and then come end of year, make make another decision.
Oh, I like that. I like that.
They have to resubmit.
Or what?
They could um make a motion again or request in December for more funding.
Can we refer it to an end of December? You you could make the motion for five hundred dollars and also refer the balance to a December meeting for reconsideration.
Okay.
I like that.
I like that, too.
Sir, can I, may I ask, I don't, what the concern would be, like, why why would we put it till till then? They just want to, just in case other people ask for grant.
You mentioned the volleyball team comes and usually fund that. I am a bit worried about maybe some of those young kids' sports teams that come in and ask for funding right in the year with the expectation because they always receive it that we're going to say we don't have any.
Right.
Um but. But I I also.
This is a pretty, pretty.
I know.
I don't, I don't like the idea of deferring a personal benefit situation.
No.
Is um very tentative because there's nothing else to actually say. Is is waiting. They've applied. It's now. This, I'm I'm I I don't mean to be advocating on their behalf directly, but that five hundred dollar is just kind of like a. Warm response from our, and they've got enough reason to hate us anyways.
Wow. Is it um fifteen hundred they're asking? Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, fifteen hundred they're asking.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm sorry.
Their sports team request for a month.
There is still a.
We could always defer the sports team request for a month. Because we could say we can um, we can actually grant you, consider your request in a month.
Is there, do we have any other revenue streams available for those? Sports teams and things like that that would normally.
Yeah, that's our discretionary.
That's it. That's all for community.
It restarts in January.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I would say that the den probably needs it more now.
And the grant.
Fifteen sixty-eight so far.
Because we have five hundred.
Five hundred advertising. You got six cents.
Because we spent one hundred.
Oh, one hundred, right.
Right.
Or you're six hundred.
Yeah, six hundred.
Five percent.
Okay.
Six hundred advertising, yeah.
Fifteen sixty-eight.
So we have.
So you still, you can, you can, uh council, you can move your money around in your budget.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
So if you're worried about. You know, a sports team coming in, you have, if you have five hundred dollars and advertise, I mean, that's. You don't have to move on, but that helps.
And also they they tend to ask for it right around Christmas time, right? So I don't know, we'd be the minute until, you know, January.
At that time, too, is if is if that's all we're worried about, you know, if it's if those requests for two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars takes it. So.
Yeah.
Um I think staff could probably help find helping in a budget too.
Was my motion seconded?
No.
No.
If you'd like to reword the motion.
Well, I was just going to do a friendly amendment if it was, but if it wasn't seconded, uh then I make a motion that we do the fifteen hundred.
And the second or councillor Baldwin, um any further discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. And although they've asked us for help in establishing a shelter, they haven't really come to us for money, so.
As it was in a different approach.
And again, they are struggling to continue, so I am actually very pleased and thank you for that. Right, so next is um correspondence from Mr. Finklet regarding speed limits in Erickson Street be received and further that it be deferred to staff. Imagine, this is uh.
Out of our.
Erickson is actually out of our jurisdiction or is it Erickson Road?
Isn't it half, eight?
Half and half.
Middle?
No. No, it's not down middle. It's.
It's owned by the ministry.
It was entirely owned by the ministry. We traded the our side of the road for another oak.
Oh.
Ash road, it was Ash road.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So we can receive it for information.
And and um her corporate officer told them that it was outside town, so.
Okay.
Wouldn't expect any response of it.
Oh, perfect. So we can just receive it.
Yeah.
It, motion two, councillor Baldwin, second councillor Hutton, all in favor? Motion is carried. And now correspondence from Minister of Housing and Municipal Affairs regarding small-scale bulk of bulk housing. That the correspondence be received. Further that, get another one. What are we gonna do? Is it? Just receive it? I think we're just receiving.
Definitely, no.
And I I think we've met this.
I think we'll just perceive it then.
Yeah, I believe we have.
Moved by councillor Dumas, second councillor Hutton, discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried. And this one is uh to be received, the uh correspondence from Canadian Pacific Kansas City Railway. Advising that the holiday train will be returning to Creston on December fifteenth be received. Motion two, councillor Holland, second councillor Hutton, all in favor? Motion is carried.
The naked ladies are on this train.
Well, just so you know.
Naked ladies are coming to town.
Black donations for the leader of U D A to be presented at the holiday train.
Fantastic.
District of West Vancouver regarding provincial directors with respect to land use and community planning, that the correspondence be received. Motion two. Councillor. All in, second councillor, all in favor? Motion carried. Next is um correspondence from Mr. Philip Perez regarding accountability of policing and senior government be received. Motion two. Councillor Dewis, second councillor Aries, all in favor? Motion is carried. I have a not least council action list report to October fourteenth be received. Motion two. Councillor Hutton, second and councillor Holland, all in favor? Motion is carried. You have the acting mayor scheduled into our agenda. Um we are open for fresh career. You're the only one here. Any questions?
Yeah, gold star.
We have a pretty.
Change or a chair.
Yeah.
So I would then regress the motion that we um be reassessed and reconvene and close them for the um. We have pursuant to the ninety-seven one C, labor relations and litigation, potentially litigation. Inked in two, councillor Aries, second councillor. Holland, all in favor? Carry with me three sisters.
Motion two.
Oh.
Take somebody. Take some names.
Return rain.
This.
Neither.
That's not like fun.
I already rattled, so.
That's fine.
You need for.
Top zebra, time to read neighbor.
What?